Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the June 19th, 2017 Post Falls City Council Meeting. We started the evening with a budget workshop at five, now entering regular session. Clerk will note that all council members are present with the exception of Councilor Henderson who is excused. We do have an introduction tonight. Who is doing the introducing? Paul Kenny.
Is he here?
Paul is not here at this time.
Tells me missed his golden opportunity to be on TV. We do have some announcements. First, the Blue Dog Movie Night. Blue Dog RV Movie Night in the Park is back for another summer of great movies and family fun. The first movie, Sing, is playing this Friday, June 23rd, at Kamalon Park. The movie starts at dusk and as always, it is free. Post Falls City Hall and City Business Offices will be closed Tuesday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. The city council meeting scheduled for July 4th has been canceled. And again, thank everyone for being here tonight. It's an off night, but we have a bunch of several staff members who are going to annual meeting tomorrow, so we moved it up a day earlier. So thank you for indulging us and showing up tonight. Post Falls Festival this Friday, July 7th through Sunday, July 9th. For the full schedule of events in vendor hours, visit the city's website at www.postfallsidaho.org. And then we received a nice email from Sherri Murphy who lives in the Greenview condo. She's a two-year resident of Post Falls and she called to thank the city for the beautification of Spokane Street. Said she and her husband love the flower baskets, planters, and Max the Fish. They really enjoy everything as they drive down Spokane Street and wanted to be sure those who installed and care for it all are thanked. And just to mention, this is a joint effort between the city and the Urban Renewal Agency, and the plants are cared for by the Parks Department. So we thank everyone for their assistance in that regard. And I'm going to maybe embarrass somebody tonight, but I'm going to make an introduction and we all appreciate Councilman Malloy. And it's nice his mother Charlotte Brown is in town tonight and she's just here to make sure Joe does in fact have a job, so welcome Charlotte. Told you you shouldn't have told me that. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict?
I will, sir. I'm going to recuse myself for the Dobson annexation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Do we need a reason for that or is that suffice?
No, we've spoken, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Also, and I know why most of you were here, or at least I'm going to surmise, if you do wish to speak, there are forms in the back to fill out. Turn it up front to Shannon. If you just wish to have your comments read, feel free to write them, turn them in to Shannon and we will read them. We will, as we get into the public hearing, we will listen to everybody. You'll have four minutes. What I would ask, if you can, if somebody has said what you want to say, acknowledge it, but if we can keep from everybody being repetitive, that would help, but we do want to listen and we are going to listen. So I'm not trying to rush you, just trying to get things to move forward. So would appreciate if everyone would keep that in mind. And with that, we have a consent calendar.
Item A is minutes from the June 6th, 2017 city council meeting. Item B is payables, May 30th through June 12th, 2017. Item C is construction improvement agreement for Prairie Falls Idaho Street Development. Item D is the Third Avenue Shop Roof Installation Bit of Proposal. Item E is memorandum of understanding for Sterling Drive Landscaping. Item F is purchase of property at 1958 North Cecil Road by the Parks Division. And item G is a cash and investment report for May.
Any questions on the consent calendar? Mr. Wolf?
Item C, under the construction improvement agreement, deep in the bowels of all of that, in fact, if you want to look, it's on page 75, there is an appendix in regard to streetlight fees. And it was my understanding that when we changed these fees last year, that that's now a tax and no longer a fee, and I didn't know whether that had been changed or whether that's still in play, or how does that work? Rob looks like he knows the answer.
Councilman Wolf, what that fee is, is we have the subdivision prepaid the first year's operating cost of the streetlights. And so that way, as the subdivision goes in and we have however many lots and they aren't paying for the overhead and the maintenance of the streetlights, we kind of even out how much we pay as the city versus what's being collected in overall revenues. And that's how we've been doing it for about 16 years. And we take a look at both Woodavista and Cooney Electric Charge and charge that amount.
But didn't we change that to be charged based on the property value versus just a flat fee?
That's changed for the individual user who owns the property. This is, when they're building out a subdivision, typically those homes are not occupied.
Yeah.
And so they'll build out the streetlights first, and so the developer pays for the first year's energy costs on those streetlights.
Okay, so this is kind of the energy cost.
So what we do is we don't look at the number of lots, we take a look at the number and types of each streetlight and then charge the amount based upon, is it 100 watt luminaire or a 200 watt luminaire? And what is the cost of that for each month?
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
No other questions? Not an entertaining motion.
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion seconds, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. First up, or first public hearing up, which is where we are right now, is the Bosef annexation. And with that, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of City Council. John Manley, Planning Manager here at the City Post Falls, introducing the Bosef Annexation, case file A-17-03. Properties owners are Douglas Bosef, Alston Durant, and Del Zook. The applicant's rep is tri-state consulting engineers. And the requested action for City Council is to review the requested annexation with the single-family residential zoning designation and approve as requested. This request, just the zoning part of it, was forwarded to City Council for recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 9th of this year. And looking at the project location, it's, as you see here, pointed out with the red arrow and the hashed, it's just west of the intersection of Chase and Grange. When you look at the future land use map, you can see that in yellow is the residential designation, so this is how it's being designated within the future land use map. So when you look at proposed annexations, you look at annexation policies and the future land use map for consistencies. Going back to the zoning of this proposal, you can see that to the west, you have R1S zone properties, and just to the south and to the east, you see R1 zone properties. A bit further to the south in the purple, that is a smart code zone. The lighter purple is more like your single-family zoning designation with the darker purple being, it's an SC4, it's kind of a mixed higher-density type use zone. And then a little bit further, you have some in brown, your RMHP, your mobile home park zoning, and in orange, your R3 zoning, which is your higher densities. So the project size is 20.94 acres. The current land use for this area is vacant. There is one single-family residence to the west, southwest of the property, that's at this location. Would note that the current configuration, it's illegal, more or less. It's over that lot line, so that single-family home with and upon development whenever that occurs, would need to become legal and be on its own lot. The proposed zoning for this, as stated in the intro, is R1. That's the single-family residential designation. The water provider would be East Green Acres Irrigation District, with the sewer being provided by the City Post Falls. So as stated, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan map, the future land use map. It's also consistent with the policies found within the comp plan, both there's specific annexation policies and general policies found. Details of that are within your staff report. It's within the Post Falls area city impact. It continues with city limits, and the R1 zoning designation is consistent to the surrounding uses. I'll go in a little bit more detail on the consistency in a bit. So looking at these annexation policies, I'll highlight a few of them, is policy point three is land to be annexed should enable completion or continuation of a pedestrian network that connects neighborhoods to amenities and activity centers throughout the community. So recently, there was an approval of an annexation to Chase and Grange Annexation where I'm currently pointing at. And at this time, they're working on getting the construction improvement agreement documents and getting that prepared for a development by this fall. With that, you would get the north half of the improvements where you see it denoted in red. If you drive by there now, you would see what you see in purple and green. Those are both parts of Craftsman and Meadow Ridge. And so they've paved the road improvements of the West Staples Road and on Genesec Loop to determine us about where I'm pointing at this location generally. So upon development, whenever this occurs of this area, this infill area, you would get the extension of Genesec Loop to Grange Avenue. Now, what this does for pedestrian connectivity, it allows neighborhoods from the east and the west to be connected. From the point east of where I'm pointing, you would have urban improvements as you see currently on Grange Avenue. You can see the sidewalks on both the north and the south side, and they also have receivers for pedestrians, so that way you can have safe crossings. To the west of this point, when you look at the meadows, you would have this cross-section transition and merge with those urban improvements. That'd be a transitional zone at Genesec Loop and Grange Avenue. Where this provides a multi-use path for safety and then an extended shoulder for pedestrians. What this is, this delineates how it was in the red hash mark not too long ago, without improvements, you had Chase Road, which was a county stretch where there was no pedestrian connectivity. So there's no way for the residents east of Chase Road, actually there was, they would have to cross that rural road section if they wanted to enter the parks, the city parks over at Grange, or off of Grange. So the fourth policy is timing annexation should be coordinated with opportunities for orderly development. Being that this proposal is surrounded by subdivisions and with the utilities and services being provided, it would be considered orderly development. Also, it's within an infill area, so policy point five would also be met, which kind of directs proposals within infill pockets. This map here, highlighted with the yellow, shows kind of the infill pocket area with development to the south and to the west, and now with development at this location as I'm pointing at. So now I'm going to get to the orderly development and some of the consistency stuff as mentioned earlier. So highlighted, this is kind of a busy map, so I apologize to that, but I attempted to look at how this area is developing. So the red line kind of denotes that most of everything east of that red line is of R1 development standards and everything, most everything west has a mix. You can see predominantly a little bit more R1S zoning with the mix down in Montrose with some R1 zoning. You look at the Black Stallion Ranch, it's R1S, but most of those lots are right around a half an acre. You look at Prairie Meadows, many of those lots are less than one acre, and they vary in sizes, anywhere to sub-half acre to ranges in .6, .7, and .8, so a variety of sized lots. The meadows is what you see here, and those there are almost all one acres or slightly greater. And then you can look at Craftsman Meadow Ridge, that's R1S, but through a PUD, and so those lots are about a third of an acre. So just because it's zoned R1S doesn't mean that historically they've all been one-acre lots. And what makes this matter a little complicated, and they stole us a bit from the roadway network master plan as provided by engineering to talk about the meadows and how this developed in this area, you don't see it abutting much of an arterial roadway. What's left to be developed, which you see in the lighter colors, they're all along either an archilla or an arterial or a principal arterial. So the cost of those is more burdensome on the remaining pieces of land. So whatever gets developed, they'll absorb those costs into that development. So when we say that the proposal is consistent with the area, that's determined on looking at, it abuts R1 lots to the south and east, it also abuts R1 lots here on the northeast. Also acknowledging though, it also abuts a lot of R1S. So when you look at the spectrum of development, the communities, you have your natural zones, we have our hillsides and our large natural areas, transitions to your rural zones, which for this area, a lot of times your five acres are greater, your rural egg zones. Then it goes into your palette of suburban zones. And so for Post Falls, that would be your R1S to your R1 zones. We don't have much in between, that's currently what we have. And even if we did have that in between, it would still be deemed as being consistent. It's all your approved suburban zones for development. And as you leave your suburban zones, you go to your general urban zones, and you have urban center zones, and then you have your urban core zones. So it just transitions from the edges into your intense areas within your downtowns. For residential policies, most ordinary activities should occur within walking distance of most residences, allowing a measure of independence for those who do not drive. Throughout the community, a range of housing types and price levels should be provided to accommodate diverse ages and incomes and provide effective, affordable housing. So as I discussed a little bit, is this area provides a wide range of lots. And so in that, vast different forms of housing. And in Post Falls, there being a workforce community tends to provide the appropriate housing for Post Falls. Highlighted in blue here, we discussed the pedestrian connectivity, but also with that, you have, these are those city parks in close proximity to the proposed annexation area. So that's where that aspect of connecting to other amenities and allowing some measure of independence kind of comes in at that location. Now, it's different from other locations, some could discuss or debate its proximity to commercial areas, but it's just as close as all the other subdivisions that it surrounds. So that kind of, at this point, it concludes planning's part of it. And I was going to invite Rob to discuss the transportation elements and engineering elements of this proposal.
Any questions, John, before?
I have one. John, my question is the equestrian path at the meadows. I believe back in, when that subdivision was approved, there was quite a bit of conversation about those paths. And I believe that, and somebody can let me know if I'm not correct, I believe that the association takes care of those paths and that that was in the master plan of that subdivision? And so if you're pointing, and I'm not saying I'm for or against anything, but if you're pointing to the parks there and you're wanting the people in this subdivision to go to those parks, are they using private property to get there if they're using the equestrian trails that are in the meadows?
Okay. I'll have, I'll go back to those road cross-sections. So in discussions with engineering and looking at the road right-ofways, the multi-use trail, this whole cross-section, this is a public road. So they would be within a public road system to get from their subdivision to the city parks. So they wouldn't be going on private property to gain access to public amenities. Or private HOA properties.
Is that okay, Linda?
And then Rob's coming up in a minute, and he can speak if I'm incorrect on any of that.
You okay? I'm good. You're good? Thanks.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Just a step back real quick, Linda, one further thing to add on to those equestrian trails. When they were originally installed, the concept was for them to be a cinder or asphalt grinding trail, and that's how they were put in. A few years after they were put in, the Homeowners Association approached the city because they wanted to, at their cost, to convert those equestrian trails from that cinders because of maintenance costs on it, to a full asphalt trail. And that's why today they are an asphalt trail. In terms of transportation, a number of issues that came up with the public hearing before planning and zoning and in some public comments that were brought before, was consideration and concerns regarding the capacity of the adjoining roadways, roadway alignments and safety. And engineering staff went back and took a look at what are the capacities of the roadway in the area. We've got our network of principal arterials, arterials and collector roads. And when the city engineering staff takes a look at a proposed annexation, we take a look at that model to see, does it fit within the context of what was put in the model as far as being able to look at the next five, 10, and 20 years out as to the traffic volumes on the roadways and will they be able to handle what's needed? Also, if it's too out of character for what was in the model, we can then take a look and say, we will need a traffic impact study done with that subdivision. Or look at a particular intersection and say that we need more details because the traffic model wasn't looking in as fine-tuned of a level as to what's going on in a particular location. For this proposed annexation, we do not have that concern with needing any additional traffic studies. The reason for that is with an R1 zone, we're looking at maybe around 100 lots capacity, maybe a little bit more, a little bit less, but that might be the maximum that we would potentially see. When we look at Chase Road and its classification as an arterial roadway, today it operates with around 3,000 vehicle trips per day. That's more of a collector level as far as operations on it. In our current transportation master plan, which was adopted in 2004, additionally looking at our current update that we are working on, you have not approved it yet, but that gives me more of a view between 2020 and 2035 as to what's going on. We do not see any changes in what's going on with Chase Road as far as needed roadway infrastructure. So what we're looking at on Chase Road between Pole Line and Prairie Avenue is a three-lane arterial roadway. That'd be a one-vehicle lane in each direction, a two-way center turn lane where it's needed, and then a bicycle lane in each spot. The local streets in the area, I went back and took a look at how they are operating. Grange Avenue within the Meadows subdivision, the intersection of Grange and Howell, which is about middle of that subdivision, currently has about 500 trips per day. If you look on the east leg of Grange Avenue as it starts heading towards Chase and recognizing that it does not connect with Chase today, it only has around 200 vehicle trips per day. When we look into the future and start to see Grange Avenue connecting in and we don't model down to the level as to what's going on on Grange Avenue as it connects to Chase Road, but as we take a look at what we anticipate with growth in that area and what is reasonable to expect for traffic volume increases, we anticipate that Grange Avenue is still going to be well within a local street standard and below 1,000 trips per day. We don't get to collector roadway, which is a busier street, until we're about 1,500 trips per day. John had mentioned that Staples Road and Genesec Loop have recently been paved with Country Meadows First Edition. With that work, Staples Road was realigned slightly and a new connection point has been made to Chase Road. In addition, in July, you're going to be hearing a proposal for a subdivision of the Chase Grange subdivision. That subdivision is proposing to make the connection of Grange Avenue and also Genesec Loop up to Grange Avenue at that time. Some concerns were in the area of railroad crossings. We have the railroad crossing of Chase Road just to the south of this subdivision. That is currently a gated and lighted crossing. It has not had any collisions within the last six years at that location. We do have in our transportation master plan some identified improvements for vertical alignment in that area. Engineering staff is looking at and would like to, within the next couple of years, move forward a project to do that project and utilize the cash outs that Country Meadows First Edition and Tuscany Place, which is the subdivision immediately to the east, have cashed out over the past 10 years. Immediately to the east of this site is the Grange Avenue Rail Crossing of the U.P. Railroad. That is scheduled for improvements of putting in gates and lights this summer. The Idaho Transportation Department is currently waiting for costs from the Union Pacific Railroad, and they anticipate those costs within the next 30 days, and then they will be scheduling a construction date after that. In terms of other public services, water reclamation, sanitary sewer is in the area. It does have the depth and capacity to serve that area with our lift stations there. And then domestic water in that area is provided by the East Green Acres Irrigation District, and we have not heard anything from East Green Acres regarding their domestic water. Before I turn this back over to John, any questions regarding transportation, water, sewer?
Al. Rob, you mentioned that Staples Road just connected to Chase, but in reading the staff report, are you going to block that off if this goes through and that, and Grange is completed through there?
If you, let's see, okay. So this section, this is where Staples Road used to connect into Chase Road.
Okay.
Prior to last Friday, it has for years been a poorly maintained or not maintained at all gravel road. With Country Meadows First Edition, we closed off that section of the public right-ofway. And they constructed, and this was more for a safety reason, because the distance from Staples Road here to Grange Avenue is too close for our standards. We put in a temporary connection point, and this is within an easement where the sewer comes into the subdivision, a 24-foot, no parking, access connection for that subdivision to get to Chase Road. When Grange Avenue connects in up here and Genesec Loop goes up, it is planned that this connection will go away. And that way we'll have the, what we anticipate to be the highest amount of safety by having a four-way intersection at Grange and Chase. Also, as those subdivisions go in, if the annexation is approved and the lands get developed, as they put in their improvements, they'll end up building what we need, which is the left turn pockets on Chase Road to accommodate the subdivisions.
Another question. You mentioned earlier about something in reg- You mentioned earlier about something in regards to the traffic study, but we don't really do traffic studies prior to annexation. We generally, if ever, do a traffic study, it's done once the development is brought forward, right?
That is correct. And the reason for that is when a subdivision is brought forward, we're able to see what are the connection points to the local roadways, how many lots are going to be in there, so we can fine-tune how big of an impact it could have and what intersections to look at and how detailed we need to be. Before an annexation process, it is good to take a look at your transportation model to see, as I mentioned before, is it in line with what we anticipate for growth to be in the area? And is that development going to cause any major concerns that we may need to take a look at with annexation? But most of the time, if you're following your master plans and your future land use plans, you shouldn't have that issue.
So in your expert opinion, if we were to approve this as R1, it is not going to have an impact on traffic in here?
In my professional opinion, I do not think that a R1 zone would cause a significant problem or a safety hazard in this area.
Okay. Perfect. Great. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
So you heard Rob speak of transportation master plan and the analysis of numbers. So, I was a part of this process with Rob, and KMPO looked at their growth modeling of where growth is going to go in the future, and they're going out to 2035. So they use these numbers and they break them up into TAS zones, of which they can go into a traffic modeling program that breaks out the loadings onto your arterials. So you can see here, as the goal was 2035, so hence that's the primary disposition of the map. There's also a window in the top-left corner for 2020 to look at where we're going up into there and where growth may occur on an intermediate basis. So you can see here that most of the growth for Post Falls is going to be, is projected to go up higher than 41. The reason for that is growth tends to follow your greenfields. They can spread the costs out more, and it can make it pencil for housing. And then they chase your smaller lots as these greenfield lots go away, and those opportunities diminish. So we took the knowns, because we have projects like the area around the Meadows, and we have, trying to get my cursor to correspond here, so, and Montrose and Foxtel, and we can go and appropriate if it was to be developed, what would that density be? So we just threw five units per acre for the available land, and then could figure out about how many units potentially could go in that area, and we threw that into those models for those TAS zones. So that's a bit of a history of where we're projecting growth and how it kind of affects that, the transportation model.
Great.
Any questions on this part of it?
Okay.
Please, John. So I presented before you guys this evening some, a little bit more in-depth analysis from Cooney County Fire. At the time of the Planning and Zoning Commission, they did approve the project as presented, but they wanted to go into more of the basis of why they were in support of this proposed annexation. When you look at the area, and the example property they looked was 1020 West Genesek Loop, they looked that they could reduce the mileage by .83 and their average response time decreased by two minutes. So that lowered their ISRB rating, which is your Idaho State Rating Bureau. Lynn helped me with that. It dropped it from a nine to a three. So obviously, whenever they can improve their level of service to the area, they would be in support of. So at this time, I would stand for any additional questions presented by staff or...
I have a question.
Yeah.
The parks that are already in the Meadows, are those city parks?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And they're maintained by the city?
Yes.
Okay. Because there was a question that came up as to whether or not those were maintained by the Homeowners Association, so I just wanted to double-check. I'm good.
I just have a question for you, Mayor. Should this not be read into the record?
That would be appropriate, sure.
I mean, we just got this handed to us a couple of minutes ago.
This is from Cooney County Fire and Rescue?
Yeah, I don't have a copy, but if...
Well, I'll read it in as we read in the comments, if that works.
Yeah, that makes sense. Let's do it that way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
All right. Thank you.
Applicant. Name for the record, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Steve Circle. I'm with Tri-State Consulting Engineers. I'm here on behalf of the client that is purchasing the property from the three property owners who was previously represented as the applicant. My client, Representative Mr. Matt Affon, is here in the audience with us and represent Lammit Real Properties. If you recall, we were here before you, before, for, is your pointer on this? Oh, there it is. I hope I didn't stab anybody in the eye, but, so we were here before with you on the north, I got it.
Could you use the cursor? The pointer didn't show up.
Oh, what's, okay. Oh, wow.
Didn't show on TV.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're here before with you with this project called North Chase Place, and we've got formal blessing to move forward on that. We're looking forward to bringing those lots online. My client was successful on acquiring these three parcels for consideration for annexation, for continuing on filling this infill, so to speak, of this property, which is surrounded by the city right now. One comment that John had mentioned before, the southwest corner of that lot is considered to be illegal, and we will be correcting the size of that with our proposal for a subdivision if, in fact, we get recommendation from you for that color on the map. We've read through the staff report. We don't have any objections to any of it. I think it's read well, prepared well. I understand the traffic concerns. I understand the water and sewer capacities. We met with the irrigation district. As priority stated, there's capacity there. On a traffic access standpoint, what we're proposing to do is going to improve capacity in there, as previously mentioned by Rob and also by John. We're really excited to bring this parcel into the city and see what we can do about it. We think that we chose R1 by the obvious R1 delineation to the east, the northeast and the south, and we think that that's a good fit. So with that, I mean, I'd love to have any questions you might have. I don't want to waste too much of your time. The staff did a great job preparing a staff report and don't really have anything to object, so I'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Circle? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
First, I will read the letter from Cooney County Fire and Rescue. The purpose of this document is to provide information behind Cooney County Fire and Rescue's decision to support the Bosaft annexation into the city of Post Falls. The parcel outlined in this petition is currently within the boundaries of KCFR Fire District and has an ISRB rating of nine. The described parcel is currently serviced by KCFR Station 1 located at 404 North Idaho. This station is staffed 24/7 with an engine and an ALS ambulance and has an average response time of 9.82 minutes to this area. The completed project with approved roads and hydrants will have a reduced ISRB rating of three. Extending Grange Avenue to Chase Road will reduce response times, improving emergency service to not only the petitioned parcels, but to the surrounding properties as well. The following paragraph refers to an example property of 1020 West Genesek Loop. Completion of this project would reduce distance to the example property by an average of .83 miles and reduce the response time by an average of 1.96 minutes. In the business of emergency service, time is everything, and it can be literally, and can literally be the difference of life and death depending on the fire or medical emergency. KCFR supports opportunities to reduce our response time and distance. Cordially, Gerald Archer II, Cooney County Fire and Rescue Fire Marshal. That was in support. There are no, none who are neutral. In opposition, not wishing to speak, Mark Hoppy. I think annexation is appropriate, but not at R1. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Larry and Linda Echelberger. We are in opposition to the annexation due to the many dangerous traffic conditions it will create, as five homes per acre is just too many. I don't understand why they, the city council, can't require the builder developer to limit the number of houses to a maximum of three per acre, which would be in the middle of the road between one and five. I have attended all the hearings and just don't think anyone cares about the people already living in the area or about the overall safety of the area. It's just about tax revenue. And just so everyone else knows, we did receive all the information correspondence minutes from your planning and zoning meeting, so we do have all read those and do have them at our disposal as well. In opposition, wishing to speak, Bobby Wilhelm. And I would ask, as you come forward, please give your name for the record, and we'll give you four minutes.
Hello, my name is Bobby Wilhelm. I live at 923 West Grange Avenue. Okay. Okay, I'm in opposition to the annexation and to the R1 zoning. First of all, I'd like to disagree with Rob here that 100 houses are coming on. There's more than 100 houses, there's 220. If you count the Bosaft annexation in here, that's proposed right now, the 20 houses, the gym guy, that's right behind here, Whiskey Flats is coming on, which is right over here, which is 57, and then this Copper Basin over here, which is about 50, that's about 220 houses that are actually coming on. I live, there's my driveway right out of my house, right there. I've watched many, many times, when that train is right here, I've watched the traffic already down to Grange. I've watched many people make U-turns out of there, trying to get out of there. I've also watched them, if you go this way, up that way, there is another railroad crossing up there. I've watched people race to get over that one, because this one has the arms that go down, but they'll race that way. I do realize they might be putting some arms up there, but people still race that way. So when you put 220 more homes with two cars per each home, that's 440, plus you have to count that you're also opening up the Meadows. People, instead of going to Fisher, they're going to come down Grange, a lot of them. They're going into Post Falls. Also, the Prairie Meadows area up in this area, the 200 and some homes there, 170 of the Meadows, this is all going to come right down in here, right down in this, right down in this area, right here. This is going to be a major safety traffic issue. This gentleman up here spoke about traffic impact studies are done, I guess, at the planning and zoning, or when they put in the subdivision area. This needs a traffic impact study. I think it's at 9.4 of the master plan of the traffic impact study. So anyway, we're going to have a huge mess right here. You talked about there hasn't been a death here for a while, but that doesn't mean there might be some down the road with everybody flipping around. It also goes the other way. This traffic right here, it stacks up all the way down into these subdivisions. So when you add up all these new homes that are coming on, it's going to be a mess. Additionally, the D-Hart property that's right down here, Fisher, there's 10 acres, that just got, it's in the process of being sold, there's 37 more houses coming on there. So I'm saying that with an R1 classification right here, this is just a recipe for disaster. Also, I'd like to address the issue of the trails that go through the Meadows. Those are on private property. And one of the gentlemen here spoke about the access to the parks and stuff going through there. Well, people are going to be going on those trails. Who's going to insure them? If somebody gets hurt on that trail, is the property owner going to be liable for that? Or is the city going to be liable for it? So I object to this annexation at R1.
Thank you, Mr. Wilhelm. Also in opposition wishing to speak, Larry Castor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, my name is Larry Castor. I live at 1896 West Grange Avenue. I'm a member of the Meadows HOA, Homeowners Association, and I'm also currently a board member of that HOA. Four minutes isn't very much time, but Bobby covered a lot of the territory I was going to try to cover, so I'll try not to go over that too much again. The Meadows subdivision was apparently approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission back in 2002. And if you look up at the map a little bit and look at Grange Avenue, you can see that that's a nice gently curving road right through the middle of the Meadows subdivision. I'm concerned about the traffic that's going to be occurring on that particular road when this annexation goes through at an R1 designation. As Bobby's pointed out, it's not just the housing in this particular annexation, but it's all the other housing that's being built currently at that Chase-Grange area. And we're looking at well over 200 houses. Every house has two cars, every car does two, four, six trips a day. We're easily over 1,000 more car trips per day. And if you're going west, the logical thing is to go down Grange. All of a sudden, we've added a lot of traffic onto Grange Avenue. In addition, the Prairie Meadows subdivision, which is just down below Grange Avenue, currently, if they're going to go east, they go up through Howell to Fisher and then take Fisher east. Once Grange is opened up to the trace, particularly that it's going to be a four-way stop, I wasn't aware of that, we're going to find people going down Grange the other direction, and that's going to add even more traffic on Grange Avenue. I don't think a full traffic study has been done to really ascertain how this is going to affect our neighborhood, and that's why I'm opposed to this annexation. We're going to have far too many vehicles going up and down that street. We already have a problem with it. It's a 25 mile an hour speed limit zone right now. That's not being adhered to, and we're getting complaints on a regular basis about that. This is going to add, I guess, another 1,000 cars a day going across that, and that's not going to be good. The second big thing I want to bring up is the R1 designation versus the R1S. If you look at this property, it thrusts right into the middle of the light-yellow R1S areas. Those are already zoned as R1S. This property should be zoned as R1S too. That makes the most sense. R1S doesn't mean it has to be one-acre lots. As already been pointed out, there's lots and lots that are less than one acre. In fact, if you look down at the radiant star, evening star area, you can see that we're way down into the half-acre, possibly less in those areas. R1S would be the more logical way to annex this piece of property. And so I'm opposed to this annexation the way it's currently being presented. And so I'm opposed to this annexation, the way it's currently being presented. And if it is, if the city council does decide to annex it, I would hope that they would amend it to an R1S designation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask the gentleman a question? Ask a question?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you, you mentioned earlier that you, you didn't want to open up Grange because of the traffic. So is it the annexation that's an issue, or opening up Grange that's an issue?
It's actually the density that's being proposed in, in this area. We're adding too many homes.
And how does that affect?
It's going to, too many homes right in that area, we're going to have a lot more traffic going down Grange to get to Maguire to go west.
And that's based on what information? I, I'm not trying to be-
Logical. It's just a logical thing. If you're, if you're on Grange Avenue, you go west to Maguire to go down to Pleasant View, to head to Spokane.
Okay.
And so anybody that's coming out of that new subdivision, or the other subdivisions over in that area that are being built, they're going to go that same direction. Go to Maguire, through Grange to Maguire. They're not going to bother to go up to Fisher and go across, whereas Fisher is really designed for the east-west. That's the, the larger roads that's, doesn't have the lots facing that particular street. Grange, now every, every lot faces the, the street, Fisher does not. But what's happening with the four-way stop pushing Grange through, putting all those houses on that end, is substantially adding to the traffic that's going to go down Grange to Maguire.
Okay. Because I guess, just being a homeowner myself, if I lived in that property, I would go out to Chase and go south to Sultes if I was going anywhere.
If you're going to go-
I wouldn't drive through a subdivision.
If you're going to go east, possibly. But it's more, it's quicker to go to Pleasant View. You go out Maguire. And we see it every day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Tom Kelly.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. I am a, I'm Tom Kelly, resident on West Grange Avenue in the Meadows subdivision, and am concerned with the high-density zoning being proposed on the budget's annexation. R1S zoning currently comprises approximately 440 acres between Maguire Road on the west, Chase Road on the east, the railroad on the south, and north of Fisher Avenue. The only R1 zoning currently is a few larger lots on the Genesect Loop. It stretches the imagination that the surrounding area is compatible with R1 zoning, and the developers are being forced to go east across Chase Road to try and justify surrounding compatibility. The other statement being said that R1S zoning is only one acre lots is not true, because the city approved half-acre lots in the Prairie Meadows and third-acre lots in the Meadow Ridge subdivision north of Fisher Avenue. So the term being used, won't pencil out, is biased in not averaging lot values. An example, a mix of R1S lot sizes selling at current prices come close to the five lots per acre figure. And instead of stating one acre lot value versus five lots per acre, so greed shouldn't be the only component for approval. In closing, it is my hope this hearing is taken seriously and not just to required nuisance that developers in the city endure to go with a predetermined mindset. Prior statements have been that conformity is a definite consideration and diversity of future expansion is the vision for the growth of Post Falls. The many problems being presented by the neighbors of this annexation need to be assessed at face value. One of the main objections is the high-density contributes to the huge traffic bottleneck at the Chase Road exit being so close to the railroad. Remember, government is for all the people, so please reconsider and annex the Bossett project with an R1S zoning. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly. Next would be Lisa Ann Summers.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Lisa Ann Summers, and I am also a resident of the Meadows, 1130 West Grange. And I'm coming to talk to you this evening regarding the infrastructure. I'm going to have some pictures here, and I'm going to start with something a little bit different. This morning, I was reading Second Timothy 3, 1 through 5, and I'm using a paraphrase. "I want you to realize that as bad as times are now, there, this is nothing compared to the perilous times of the last days. People will love only themselves and money. They'll be conceited, abusive, disobedient, contemptuous of parents, ungrateful, and impious. Many will lose all natural affection, will break contracts, slander their friends, lack self-control, be brutal, and despiseers of what is good. They will be treacherous, rash, irresponsible, conceited, and will love pleasure more than they love God. Outwardly, they'll be religious, but they'll deny the power of God and the need for them to change. Don't be taken in by such people." On the one or more occasions that we've been in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was stated that it's all about the money, and the higher the density, the more tax revenue. It has also been conveyed, on more than one occasion, that minds have already been made up. To this point, I'd like to submit infrastructure pictures taken on the afternoon of June 12th. Who shall I give these to?
Uh, to our clerk, please.
Do you want to put them on the overhead?
Do you have another copy over there, so you can put them on the overhead?
Um, I do not.
We'll give you one.
Do you want me to put them up here instead?
You've got a minute and a half, so.
Okay. So if you take a look at the photos, basically what you're seeing is infrastructure already in place for the Bossett annexation. Here to four, the Bossett annexation has not been approved. No engineering firm would make extensive infrastructure investments without certain assurances. On page 33 of the May 9th P&amp;Z hearing, under fire protection, it states, "The development of this property will include installation of water mains, water services, and fire hydrants, as required by the City of Post Falls and the Fire Prote- Fire Protection District." Why has infrastructure already been placed, even though the Bossett annexation hasn't even been approved? Clearly, development has already begun. So this begs the question, what are we missing? Why is the proverbial cart going before the horse? Why are valid safety, traffic, and infrastructure studies and issues being bulldozed by the way, by the wayside? As we're talking about the Meadows neighborhood and safety and traffic, and I think Larry just mentioned it, one thing that we failed to point out is the children that are running through that neighborhood, not only running.
Please wrap, wrap up.
Pardon me?
Your time is up, please wrap up.
Yes. So children on skateboards, children on bicycles, children running, all, all with increased traffic and speeds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are we supposed to do?
We'll get back to.
Thank you.
We actually need to keep those for the record.
Next up is Joni Castor.
Before we move on. Yes. I don't know who to ask. Would it be appropriate to get a, solid answers to where exactly those are located, if they're, if they're within the boundaries of this annexation?
Yeah, I think the applicant will come back up for rebuttal. I think that'd be a good time for him to speak to this.
Thank you.
And please name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson and City Councilmembers. My name is Joni Castor. I live at 1896 West Grange in the Meadows. So many of the issues have been already covered here, so I'm not going to go over a lot of them. I just myself noticed a couple days ago that Staples had gone through to Chase, which I was kind of shocked about. And I'm hoping that it actually would be permanent, because living on Grange, we have all of our front door spaced range. It's a very quiet street. It's a curving residential street. And I know the gentleman here said that his traffic study indicated now we have about 200 cars a day, and he didn't feel it was going to be much of an impact if all of a sudden we have 1,000 cars a day on Grange. To me, that would be a very, very significant impact on our quiet residential street. And none of the homes on Chase or Fisher have their front doors facing Fisher or Chase. Ours is much more a quiet residential street than either Chase or Fisher. So all of a sudden, going to 1,000 cars a day on our street, to me, is an extreme significant impact, so I do have to disagree with that. If there was a traffic study done, I think it was 2004, I think that's outdated. I think it needs to be redone. I also noticed what Lisa said the other, just the other day, that even though the property has not been annexed or the subdivision been approved, I was shocked to see that there was water, electrical, and sewer already in place. How do they know how many homes are going there? How are they anticipating that all this electrical sewer and things have been in place? And we don't know how many homes are going up. So I was kind of shocked to see that. So I just feel that this study needs to be done with a lot more research and looking into more of how residential our area really is. So I do oppose it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, John Stevens.
Hi, my name is John Stevens. I reside at 1999 West Staples and Meadows Development in Post Falls. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I've been to a few of these meetings and kind of trying to learn the process of it. And it, it all seems like it's pretty all predetermined. I was pretty well discouraged when I went to the, to the planning and zoning por- portion of this back on May 9th. And, you know, when one of the members said, you know, "It's a no-brainer. Five houses per acre, one house per acre, kachin'. You know, it's all about the money." Those are almost per quote his words. And there were three other members that agreed with him on that. And, you know, that's wrong, because one of your people from Planning and Zoning said that R1S, one house per acre versus R1 up to five houses per acre, it averages out. We're paying more due to the property value in R1S. And the rest of it is made up in the, the less impact on the infrastructure. And, you know, we can't tell you how much it's going to change it, but you can talk to anybody in the real estate industry when that R1, if it's approved that goes in, it's going to greatly affect our property values. And with this proposed annexation here, there is all R1S directly bordering it. The other perimeters are all buffered by a street. They're not directly bordering an R1 infrastructure. And another thing I found out too, that I've, I've done some studies on my own, the gentleman here asked at how we knew about traffic. The gentleman from Planning and Zoning said that, in some of the meetings, that typically people are going to take the shortest route, and they're going to go up Chase and down to Sultes and out to go to the west. That's wrong, because that isn't the shortest route. Physically shorter for the proposed annexation site is shorter by a quarter, almost a quarter of a mile to go Staples to Grange, down to Maguire, it to the same intersection. I mapped it out and checked the mileage on it. And the average travel time that direction was about five minutes. Two speed changes, two gated railroad crossings. Going the Chase direction, it was almost two minutes longer, a quarter of a mile longer, with one railroad gated railroad crossing, one gated gra- one ungated railroad crossing. And depending on the time of the day, whether school is in session or not, could be up to six speed changes versus going the other way, Chase-Maguire. And, you know, Chase is really a substandard arterial. There's multiple uncontrolled access to it. The kids coming out of that path to nowhere, out of Montrose, in the middle of that road, they've got nowhere to go. They're pedaling so hard to get up that hill, weaving in and out of traffic, you almost have to stop. And in the wintertime, it's just horrible for those kids coming up there. And where do they cross? They've got to go blocks in either direction to be able to come to an intersection to cross, to a legal crosswalk. And in a one direction, it runs out. And, you know, we just feel like we're getting thrown under the bus on this thing here. Not opposed to the annexation of this, we're really opposed to the R1 zoning. I think it needs to be more consistent to the R1S that is directly bordering the proposed annexation property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Dennis Quinn.
My name is Dennis Quinn, 1203 West Grange. I was wondering if I can get this up here. This is a, what we think is going to be developed in the Bossett's annexation. The developer at the P&amp;Z committee first declined any knowledge of this, and then at the end of the meeting, they said that this was one of their plans. But I just can't help think that the P&amp;Z commission just, I just can't help but think that they glossed over all arguments against annexation as R1 and basically sided with the developers. I think their minds were already made up before the meeting. 14 people spoke or submitted written statements in opposition to annexation as R1, and only two written statements supported it. The commissioners were presented with very good arguments concerning railroad safety, traffic safety, density, wildlife, open space, impact on schools, quality of life, pressure on city services, and the need for an independent traffic study. All arguments were disregarded by city planners and the developers engineer. The commissioners also disregarded all arguments in opposition and refused to consider an independent traffic study. Due to constraints, I'm going to concentrate on density. Disregarded was the fact that the Bossett's annexation is surrounded on two, on two of three sides by approximately 400 homes of R1S housing, all to the west of Chase Road. These developments consist of the Meadows, Prairie Meadows, and Meadow Ridge, all designated R1S, also, or also designated as R1S is Black Stallion Ranch just south of the railroad tracks. It should be noted that some of this R1S development is built to a higher density than one lot per acre, so it can be argued that this annexation could be designated as R1S and built to a higher density. Most of the neighboring R1 housing is to the east of Chase and south of the railroad tracks, with only Country Meadows directly adjacent to the south side of the Bossett's annexation. Let's look at some, the lot sizes of some of these developments. Country Meadows, which is directly adjacent, the average lot size is 18,991 square feet. Country Meadows first addition, the average size is 12,870, 857 square feet. Whiskey Flats on the other side of Chase is 7,895. Northern Plains is 17,940, and their first addition averages 10,970 square feet. Tuscany Place across grain, or across Chase is- Tuscany Place across Grange, or across Chase is 7,326 square feet average. If the Bossex Annexation is approved as R1 and built to five lots per acre, as one, as this development proposal shows, you would end up with average lot sizes of 6,500 to 6,700 square feet when taken, when you take streets into consideration. Completely out of sync with surrounding R1 developments, not to mention the surrounding R1S developments. Let me be clear. We are not against annexation of this parcel. We are not against growth. Growth is inevitable and necessary. But responsibly planned and managed growth is vital for all the reasons the P&amp;Z Commission disregarded. If a developer needs to build five houses per acre to make a profit, please remember the mayor's own words when commenting on another annexation proposal. Quote, "It's about what makes sense. It's not our responsibility to make sure investments are profitable." And Lynda Wilhelm also commented on that annexation. "I know we need housing, but at what cost?"
Time, sir. Could you wrap it up?
I've got two paragraphs.
That's probably pushing it a bit. Can you wrap it up quick?
Wouldn't it be fair to all to come some sort of compromise on density? I don't think anyone here really expects the results of these meetings to be R1S and one-acre lots. But I wouldn't expect, given the size of the lots and surrounding R1 areas, that five lots per acre should be allowed. The only way to ensure that won't happen is to annex this parcel as R1S. I'm asking the council to vote for annexation as R1S so that there is a possibility of compromise on density. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, can I ask?
Yes.
Can I ask the gentleman a question?
Go ahead.
Sir, this has come up from several of you, and I'm, I guess I'm looking for a question. I keep asking myself this question. I'm not sure who can answer it, but how does the, how would this affect you if it were 1 versus 1S? How would it affect?
I feel that R1S fits, if you, you know, can we get that other diagram up where they drew the line down?
I'm just curious, how, how does it affect the people in the 1S area if this is 1? I'm not sure.
Well, it's just higher density, more traffic, more.
Traffic. I just want to make sure I'm not missing something other than the traffic issue. Property values?
And strictly density and conformity to what's already there. If you look at, they've got that dotted line just to the west of the Bossex Annexation, when there still are 1S to the, to the east of that line. And, and R1S actually is surrounding it on two of three sides. But what's directly south of it is the Country Meadows Annexation or development. And like I said, their, their average lot sizes are 18,991 square feet to 12,857 square feet on the First Edition. So it's clearly much lower density than the surrounding R1 areas. Okay?
Yeah, great.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you. Deb Saunders?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, President Wilhelm, council members. I'll be very brief. At the planning and zoning meeting, I, what I, the point I want to make is that I hope that none of you feel that that was a mandate for your vote. Three of the commissioners were not present to vote. One voted against it. And the two council members that we've alluded to previously, one had already stated or did state that he was opposed to any further R1S anywhere, because it's a lost leader, which was rather shocking to those of us who pay very high property taxes with very little impact on city services, as R1S tends to do. And the other council member, I think, disrespected the entire process by saying to us, "Be glad we're not approving a multifamily behind you." I think that devalues the community input. It devalues the process. And I hope that none of you feel that was a mandate for your vote.
Just for clarification, it was planning, zoning commissioners and not council members?
Yes, I misspoke. Planning and zoning commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Scott Portman.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson and council members. I'm Scott Portman. The attorney retained by the Meadows Homeowners Association Board of Directors. When the board asked me to assist them with this effort, I was honest and said, you know, you're, you're trying to stop infill annexation and, you know, good luck to you, because infill annexations are hard to, hard to oppose, hard to stop. Kind of like trying to stop a speeding train with a BB gun. So people are shooting a lot of BBs here tonight, and I don't think we're going to stop this infill annexation. That's kind of inevitable. Or any of the other county pockets that will inevitably be annexed, maybe even this year. You know, the, the market is good, recovering after quite a long hibernation, and developers are out there looking for prime property like this to annex and subdivide. And we've already seen the Chase five-acre annexation get approved, and their plat application coming to you from Planning and Zoning Commission with a recommendation for approval at the R1 level. I, I think it's important to remember, in making an annexation decision and zoning with annexation, you're, you're making a legislative decision. You're not as constrained as if you were making a quasi judicial decision. So really, what you need to ask yourself in making this legislative decision, to expand the boundary of the city, who's, who are your constituents for this decision? Is it the developer, the owner of this particular 21-acre parcel? Or is it the neighborhood that surrounds it? You have every reason in front of you to approve this annexation and zone it R1S. You can look at the map on the screen, and it gives you every reason to make that legislative decision. And it's fully supported by the circumstances that surround this piece of property. You can look at the same map and justify zoning R1. But you've heard a lot of testimony tonight from people who live in this neighborhood, 170-plus homeowners just in the Meadows, who are very concerned about the impacts of the higher density of R1 development. There's already going to be 20 houses on a five-acre parcel on the Chase annexation. That's coming your way. You can see the pockets that are going to follow. The easiest way to mitigate the impacts that have been presented to you, the potential impacts, is by lowering the density. And if this developer can't make that pencil, that lower density, that's not on you. That's a market decision. But your constituency for this decision should be the hundreds of homeowners who already live there, not the one developer who wants to maximize their profit by getting an R1 zone. Council members, you can go either direction with this. R1 maximizes the impact. R1S mitigates those same impacts. Ask yourself, who is your constituency for this decision? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the last person wishing to speak is Kathleen Quinn.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Quinn. I live at 1203 West Grange Avenue in Post Falls. Your honor, councilman. I wasn't going to speak. I wrote a little blurb. She took it, and I had her pull it back out, because someone was going to be arriving here to bring some pictures that she had obtained. And luckily, I have my iPad. The pictures, I'm not even going to explain where they are, but I'm just going to show you the impacts. I hope this comes up right. Pretty much. I'm going to do one more thing. Make it a little brighter for y'all. I'll just let these pictures speak to you. And this is your BB shots, Mr. Portman. This is taken from a car parked at the Chase railroad tracks, right off of Chase, coming from the Meadows and going towards Sultice. Thank you. Here you see a train. And then I don't have to say anymore. Car number one popping a UE. There goes another one. And then here you have someone coming this way, but someone still popped that UE and made it around him. So there's your three-lane highway that you're talking about putting. Here's your third. Fourth. This, the best one is coming up. That's the best one. You could do it with the fifth wheel. And she was left by herself with all 20 cars. This, I don't have the times on it, but in talking to her, she had written them down on a piece of paper. It was in, in less than five minutes that all these cars made UE's. And this is the school bus on the other side. I can print these out or email them to you if you'd like to have those for your.
Well, yeah, we need those for the record, so we can get with you afterwards to make sure we can get copies, please.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now it's time for applicant rebuttal. Okay. Again, for the record, Steve Circo with TriState Consulting. And I'll go down the list in order. Let's start with Mr. Wilhelm, who lives on Grange Avenue, west of the segment that is earmarked by City Transportation Master Plan for the Connection. With this property being annexed, which is what we're here tonight to talk about, is we're asking, is it, is it for consideration to honor the recommendation from P&amp;Z? And does it make sense to you guys to annex the piece of property? And then with that being said, let's give a color on the map. We're asking R1. I believe that a lot of the traffic concerns, and I'll probably cover a lot of the people that spoke, so I'll try to go through it so I don't reiterate for each spoke, each person that spoke, but certainly, traffic is an issue. Understand that. A concern. We'll get to the slideshow in a minute, but certainly a concern, but I'm going, I'm going to, I'm going to go off of what your traffic engineer, your engineer states, is that you have capacity. The staff report states that right now, currently, you've got 3,000 trips, and you have capacity between 6,000 to 15,000 trips on Chase Road, as it sits right now. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that at some point in time in the AM and PM peak hour, you're going to have issues like a train crossing, or maybe during the day. Can't really answer that and fix that, but with this property, I couldn't fix it either, because if I was R1S, I'd still be generating more trips, not more, some trips than what exists. So looking at that, what's the responsible thing for what makes sense with the city bringing on property, annexing an infill piece of property in the city, which is surrounded by the city? Chase is already classified, and it's already got a, got a current classification and zoning with capacity on it. With our property surrounding, can we go back to this one? Thanks, John. Thanks. With our properties being surrounded by the, by the Meadows, here and here, it's all already fenced by those property owners. So visually screening is already, is already appropriate. It's already done. I mean, I can't offer any more than that. It's already there. With whatever we just, we propose to do, if in fact we get annexed, propose, you know, to get annexed in. Grange is part of the city master plan. With our development, we can take Staples, which is a very not-desired connection between Grange and where Staples currently comes in temporarily, and bring it up, which matches your transportation master plan. Although the trips that we generate here won't be dumping over to the west on Grange. Now, if, let's look at the Meadows on a transportation standpoint. We have, sorry, I've got to get my buys working here. Whole road that a lot of these trips here, they either go out to the west, or they have to come all the way up here to Fisher to dump out, to do one of two things, go north or south, depending on AM and PM peak hour trips. With Grange being a connection, as already master planned, but it wasn't a part of the original master plat of the, of this development, well, that helps alleviate a lot of that traffic congestion that they already, they already experienced on Fisher and Chase. So I think that's a good thing that, that the staff report recognizes that. Mr. Kelly, lives on Grange, lot values, concerned about that. Well, I'm not a realtor, and I can't necessarily respond to that much, but we are in, we are in a decent market, so I guess, I guess, I'm an engineer, so I can't really say much about values. Lisa Ann Summers, lives on Grange. We're not developers that are greedy, and we're not here to maximize the density. In fact, we'll get to the map that, that Mr., I believe, Quinn stated, or showed, or one of them did earlier, later on. That's not, that's not what we're here tonight to do. We haven't presented a plat to you. We're here for a color on the map. We're here for your consideration for annexation. And that's what I want to stick to, because when we go to a subdivision application, that's when we talk about density. But I understand that we're asking for density with a zoning classification, but it doesn't mean that we may come forth with an application that is less dense than five units to the acre. So let us do that. Let us propose that. But if it's one unit to the acre, well, then I still don't think that's, that's wise, in my opinion, as an engineer and a planner. So Mrs. Castor had mentioned about, she lives on Grange as well, concerned about density, concerned about the homes and access off of Grange. Well, again, we, we won't be really accessing off Grange, except for the portion we're going to connect, per our development, onto Chase Road. I don't envision a lot of trips coming from our development, going to the west along Grange, to get over to the west side. It's going to be much safer for them to go down, because Chase is classified as that type of arterial to handle that trip, those trips. Here's Mr. Quinn. There it is. Presented that plat. It's not my plat. I don't have my logo on it. I haven't presented it, and I'm not a fan of it being here, because I'm not, we're not proposing that. So I just want to be honest with that. We're here about managed growth. I've been managed growth in front of you many a times. And I always say to my clients, the property supports the density. This property can support this density. It's got the water, it's got the sewer. The city's already, already designed the transportation aspect of things. This is a logical location, logical density for this piece of property. Mr. Portman talked about legislative decision. You're right. You've got a lot of neighbors, but all the neighbors, he, he mentioned that 171 current homes in the development. With all due respect, then 171 people aren't here, but the ones that are here live on Grange Road, which is understandable, because that's their direct impact. And I get that. I'm glad they're here. But again, we're not dumping trips to the west. It'll be minimal. And as far as pedestrian access moving north and south, with the development we're going to do, with the development that's already cashed in, that's going to go on and improving Chase, the kids, the school kids are going to get that, that, that missing segment they don't have right now to get safely to the school to the south and go into the east. You've seen the segments in the presentation from John that already has those pedestrian corridors. Our proposals will have pedestrian access. The cities, you know, your staff's going to require that. And your city standards are going to require that we provide for not only just pedestrian access, but also vehicles, well, in a safe manner, meeting your city requirements. I gosh, Mrs. Quinn, on the slideshow, traffic concerns of the railroad crossing, well, that's south of, that's south of our project. It does impact. We will impact that. I'm not saying we don't, but also you, you heard from your assistant city engineer that I'm not saying we don't, but also you heard from your assistant city engineer that there are provisions to make that happen and improve that. So hopefully, it'll get better, and it's gonna be managed, but I don't really know how to address that, but I'd certainly stand for any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Circo at this point. Al.
The infrastructure pictures that the one lady presented, are those on this property?
There is some of them, yes. Yes. And what we did is, I'm glad you brought that up. There is, when the developer to the south, we got to, gotten with them, and we knew that they were putting that in. It's already approved by you guys, and they're developing, I believe it's two-thirds of the road, but with water and sewer, and we talked to the irrigation district, it made sense at our risk, and my client said, yeah, let's put it in at our risk. So we put services in with full knowing that if we don't get that density, well, then some of those will have to be abandoned. But that was his choice to do because he didn't want to cut the road up, and we didn't want to jeopardize the structural integrity of the road to pull and put those in at a future date if in fact we got approved. So one hand, I can hear what the public stated is that, oh, yeah, well, cart before the horse. But on the other hand, we're being responsible to say, well, right across the street on Staples is R1. So we approached the city staff and said, look, could we put this in at our own risk? And we got a blessing to do so.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Circo?
Thanks, Steve. Thank you so much.
What was the public hearing? Except for council deliberation, who'd like to start?
Probably none of us. This is always, you know, number one, I appreciate everybody being here. I appreciate everybody coming, sharing your voice with us because I can't speak for everybody on the council, but I know that my mind's not made up until I get here and I hear all the input. Rarely is there this much input, so I appreciate it. One thing that I do come prepared, I read through the information, I read through the facts, so that at least I'm prepared to make a decision when that time comes. So is my mind made up? No, it's not made up if someone can present me with new information, new facts, that can change that information. Biggest issue that comes up in this particular case is traffic. Traffic will always change whenever we make any changes to our city. It's gonna change for that matter. It will impact those of you who live on Grange. I'm not gonna sit up here and try to deny the fact that it's not going to impact you. It will. My job as city councilman is to try to put myself in that position and find out, is it gonna change dramatically? Is it going to have such an impact on your property values, on your way of life, that I would want to deny this? I put a lot of faith in Mr. Paulus. I've sat up here as either a city councilman or planning and zoning commissioner for 10 years. He's never steered me wrong. If Rob Paulus says it's not gonna have an impact to that particular area, I believe him. Now, again, it will have an impact, but it's not gonna be a serious impact. I have a lot of faith in him. If he steers me wrong, then that'll change. But to date, that's not happened. So for those of you who live on Grange, I apologize because I am going to vote to approve this, and it will have an impact on you. But I don't think it's gonna be significant enough to deny this request. The other question that came up was property values. I'm not a realtor. I don't pretend to be, but I do believe in supply and demand. And it would make sense to me that if we put R1S in that property, we just increase the supply of 1RS or R1S in this particular area, and if anything, that would change your property values. Because now there's more property out there zoned the same way as your property is. I don't believe, and Linda, you can jump in here as a realtor in the room, I don't believe that a smaller lot behind your fence is going to impact the property value. I don't understand how that would happen. If somebody would've come here tonight and said, this is what happens, and this is why, and I've got this documentation that says if there's a smaller house behind my house, it's gonna reduce my property values, I would've liked to hear that. I didn't hear that. I just heard opinions that it will change the property value, but no facts. So I'm going with the fact that there just happens to be a smaller lot behind yours over the fence, it's not really going to have an impact on your property values. I do have a question about the liability on the paths. I think Mr. Wilhelm brought that up. Someone did. Can somebody explain that to me?
Thanks, Ralph.
Counselor Wolf, the record is closed at this point, so I'm not sure that we can answer that for you. I will say, as a matter of legal basis, we can't really provide a legal opinion to the private citizens as to liability issues. That's really for them to resolve with their own counsel.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Question also came up that we shouldn't consider this because it doesn't pencil. I never heard that from anyone other than the opponents. I've not been approached or in any way did the proponents say that we needed to make this one, this R1 to make it pencil. I didn't hear that, so I don't know really where that came from, other than from the opponents who said that we shouldn't consider that. Guess what? I don't consider that. I don't care if it pencils or not. It's what makes sense. In this particular case, I believe that the city will be better served by having Grange Road connect. I think that we should honor the request of the proponent and make this R1. With that, I'm done.
Next?
I'll go.
Go ahead, Joe.
Couple of things I agree with Counselor Wolf about. The Grange Avenue connection to Chase Road has been in the master plan for years, so it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody that that eventually was gonna connect. And whether we're R1 or R1S, there's gonna be an increase in traffic either way. There's 200...
Excuse me. You got a phone line? Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Joe.
No problem. How much of an increase in traffic's gonna be for R1 versus R1S with the other R1 going in in the surrounding area? Probably gonna be pretty minimal. Again, I'm not engineer, so I trust the engineers we have. The five acres to the northeast corner of that, we were here for that annexation not long ago. And that one, R1, the primary reasoning behind the council's approval of that, to my recollection, was that there was no way to put an interior road in that five-acre parcel and still be able to develop it at all at any density less than R1. So it's either develop it at R1 or just sit stagnant, period. Now, that's not the case with this lot in question. So I don't, so that logic doesn't fit. The map that was up with the dotted line, I think that's a little bit disingenuous because there are borders already to this development, being primarily Poline, Chase, Maguire, Prairie. If we look at that block as a whole, then it's fairly apparent what the spirit of that block is to be, and that is R1S. This property juts right into the middle of it. There is some R1 on the periphery, on the outsides of the railroad track, along the railroad track, along the roads, the primary arterials. This one goes right in the middle of it. So will it affect traffic? Yeah, it'll affect traffic either way. Is Grange gonna go through? It was gonna go through anyway. Does it really affect the tenor, I suppose, of that block? And I think it would to put R1 in here. It just doesn't fit the plat. I think R1S is a more sensible choice, just for the tenor and the quality of living in that block. That's my thought process at this point.
Thanks, Joe.
I, too, my thoughts go out to the people who live on Grange. I do think that if this is zoned R1, it is going to have an impact on that street. The street, however, was always going to go through. I mean, we talked about that with the other annexation just a little bit to the north of this. I believe, pretty much like Counselor Malloy does, that if you look at the plat, the property as a whole surrounding it, that the bulk of the property, if you put the red line back up there, is R1S. The traffic, I'm with Mr. Wolf. I do trust the traffic engineers. I'm really on the fence about which way to go with this. Again, we're supposed to trust our staff. I'll tell you something, and this is gonna sound really bad, but the pictures of that, those utilities being in that property when this has not been approved really, really bugs me. I could use a little stronger language, but yeah, I don't like that. I don't like that at all. Because that's presuming that it just, it's a bad way to do business, as far as I'm concerned. Having that been said, I personally am gonna go with the majority here. And I'm gonna do that because I couldn't make a decision either way. I trust the engineers. I trust that the traffic is gonna be an impact to Grange. I feel bad about the people in the Meadows if this does go R1, but there are 50/50 reasons going either way. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with the majority of how this council votes.
Mr. Wilson, you have a comment?
Mayor, thank you. Just a quick clarification. Tonight, you're looking at both an annexation and a zoning request. The annexation piece, that is a legislative matter. You can make your decision on essentially any relevant information that you want to base the annexation piece on. The zoning piece needs to be consistent with our adopted criteria for zoning. Those are the only criteria that you can consider tonight. Those are contained in your staff report. They're also in the record of decision from the planning commission. The gist of it is, essentially, it boils down to zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, geographic and natural features. There's some additional findings that aren't terribly relevant to this because it really deals with commercial and industrial and high-density residential development. So those aren't terribly relevant to what you're doing tonight. The other ones that are relevant, amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map, and amendments to the zoning map should be consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. So those are really the only things that you can consider tonight, anything on the zoning piece. Anything beyond that really is getting outside the bounds of what you're charged by state law to do tonight, so.
I have a question for, on that note. So if we, it's R1 anyway. I mean, it's R1 zoning, is it R1S? I mean, R1S fits in that criteria as well?
Sure. That's why they pay you the big bucks, to get to sit here and make those decisions. I think John, early on in his presentation, acknowledged that the comprehensive plan designation for this area is residential, and it doesn't come out more fine-grained than that and say, high-density, low-density, medium-density. It doesn't provide that for you. You get to make that decision based on the information you hear tonight, so long as you can base that decision on information that's contained in the record that was created for tonight. So you all get to look at that and make a decision based on what you've heard, based on the record that's created. Is the requested zone consistent with what's been proposed? If it is, that's one decision. You can make a decision based on a different zone and comply or compare that to those same standards.
So how would that work? I wasn't under the impression that these are linked, that we've been requested to annex this at a particular zone.
So there's, you always hear them together, but they're separate items. The legislative piece is, what should the boundaries of the city look like, whether we should annex the piece of property or not? Under state law, the decision on the initial zoning is appealable. That makes it a quasi-judicial proceeding. So you need to base your decision on our standards, and those standards allow you to make a decision based on what's the appropriate zoning. In this case, the planning commission recommended R1. You could make a decision R1S. If the applicant objects to that decision, they could either appeal that, or they could withdraw their request for annexation. Those are pretty much your options for tonight.
I have another question, then. If there was only four people at the planning commission and they brought the, I mean, I realize that they had a quorum with four people, but doesn't that come into like a normal person's idea of, is that fair when that body is seven people large?
How to answer that? Let me phrase it this way. Your decision tonight is based on the record created before you. This is a separate public hearing, not the public hearing that the planning commission heard. So you're basing your decision on what you're hearing tonight, the record that's created. I wouldn't ever say that when you have a quorum who does business, that their decision ought to be discounted because the full body wasn't there. I don't think that is fair to anybody that has to do these types of deliberative processes. So you're really basing your decision on the record that you create tonight here.
Mr. Borders?
Okay. With that being said, I think annexation in is the right thing to do, no matter what happens here with the zoning part of it, but I think the annexation is gonna happen. The traffic, it's gonna happen here regardless of how the growth occurs. We're gonna have traffic issues, and again, I think that's been addressed, so I'm not gonna dive into that one very hard. All the way around that, with the exception of the very south part of that parcel, is R1S. And I think that there is, in one of the maps that we have before us, shown on the south side of that, that there is a band along there where there are some R1 two-acre lots. So I think there was some pre-decision into looking at this as more of a R1S than an R1 from ways back. So I would support going with an R1S.
Thank you. Counselor Thorson?
First of all, this should be some indication that we do not sit and make these decisions elsewhere at a prior time to being here and hearing public testimony. And I appreciate everybody being here, including the staff, who I have a great deal of respect for as well. And after hearing Mr. Wilson, I'm finding out what doesn't matter on my notes. I do want to say, none of us are greedy, none of us, the pencil doesn't matter for what we do here. And 30 years ago, I bought a house in Pioneer Ridge on Powderhorn Street, and there were about 20 houses. So when I look at these maps, this is an area that I live in. All of these houses have come since. I love this community. Do I have more traffic on my street? Do I, take me a little longer to get from point A to point B? It does. But I've lived in the same house for 30 years. My husband goes up Chase Road to work north on Chase Road. He uses Grange. So this is not only my town, but my area, too. But that map, and I have to agree with Counselor Malloy, when you look at not just what is right, but what fits there, I vote to, I will vote to approve the annexation at the R1S designation.
Well, I don't get to vote, but let me share my thoughts. I was a huge proponent of the R1S for the Meadows, and I think it's an absolutely wonderful, wonderful development. I was a proponent of the Prairie Meadows, even though it was supposed to be half-acre lots and some are smaller. As far as traffic, I'm on Chase Road. I see the cars that come by. As far as property values, that's where I will disagree with most of you who made the comment. I bought, we bought our house when it was open field, and there's, I don't know, 400, 500 homes around me. And if the tax assessment means anything, my property value did not go down at all. So I don't think that has an impact. I understand the traffic concerns. The Chase and Grange annexation that we did, I believe Mr. Malloy mentioned that, and the reason that made sense R1 was because there was just not a good way to make it R1S. But I've been a huge fan of the R1S, much, oftentimes much to the chagrin of our planners who don't think that's necessarily a good use of land. But that's where I come from as well. And like I said, I don't get to vote. And, like I said, I don't get to vote. But that's, the way I would lean as well would be the R1S. But with that being said, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve this annexation with the associated zoning designation of R1S.
Second.
Motion seconds. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
No.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And again, I would like to thank everyone for showing up tonight, for providing your information, and we appreciate you taking the time to do so. And we would like to take, with everyone's concurrence, a five-minute break.
Yay. Yay.
Act Order. Thank you very much. Next item up is a continuation of the fiscal year 2017 budget amendment. Mr. Faulkner.
I am not going to be popular tonight. I don't care. Thanks.
Give you any time.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. There's some questions after the last budget hearing that we needed to answer, and then we came back with some follow-up. And our city attorney has suggested that we have, this is a public hearing, and so I'll go through the presentation again. And I had added some follow-up answers to the questions.
Give me a minute. This is a public hearing, isn't it? I call the meeting order.
All right.
Sorry.
That's okay. So we'll go ahead, and I will go through the, the public hearing information again. And then we, I had included in the council pack-up some follow-up for the questions that we had at the last public hearing. So hopefully that will help you. All right, thank you. Oh, that is better. Thanks. I can hear myself speak. Okay. For the second budget amendment for fiscal year 17, there are two funds that are being affected. The general fund for $1,549,000, and the water reclamation fund for $225,685. In the general fund, we're requesting a support specialist for $67,000. Finance is requesting $1,000 for utility billing. The parks is requesting $35,000 for a Highlands landscaping agreement. And engineering is requesting a engineering tech for $73,469, and an engineering services contract with JUB for $30,000. Also, an additional building inspector for $78,195. And a permit coordinator, which the permit coordinator will be the focal point for customer service and the permit center, where you can find out where your permit is in the process, and that position is $74,093. And also, in the capital division for the general fund, there, the police department is requesting a, to construct an animal shelter. And even though the, the, some of the monies has been donated through a, a, an outside contribution, and also the water reclamation project, water reclamation fund is looking to contribute to this project. I have to budget for the full amount in the general fund. And also, I have to do some housekeeping items on a block grant that the city received as a pass-through for the, from the state of Idaho. So the general fund will be total requested for a budget amendment is $1,500, $1,5,490. And in the other side of the transaction is the, I'm requesting a budget amendment for the water reclamation fund, and this is, $212,000 is going to be what the value is that was estimated to reimburse the, for the animal, animal control shelter for the improvements they've done at the water reclamation site. And also, they have requested a seasonal worker for $13,685. And the, for a total of $225,685. And then, the next step is there is a budget ordinance later on for your consideration.
The funds coming from wastewater to the police department for the animal shelter, that is a building they had planned to either have to build or expand something. So they will be using that for their, their purposes and needs. Correct?
Yeah. Once the animal control shelter is moved out of there, the wastewater department will take over that building and use it for their, use it for their own use. Yeah.
The costs associated with the new employees, fully loaded with benefits?
Yeah. It's hard to tell if, when we hire somebody if they have a full family or not. So at the four, we, when we budget the salary, I budget for the, the medical for full family. So it's, it's fully loaded as well. VICA, Percy, all included.
And I believe we were hoping that the animal shelter, the new one, comes in lower than what the projected costs were.
Yeah. That, with the amount that they had for the animal shelter, that's the worst-case scenario. They're looking at also, from what I understand, is they're looking at the, the plans and maybe scaling some of the items back.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason, is there any way to break those, break this apart? Or is this an all or nothing?
No, you can, I believe they can.
Can approve any piece of it that you want.
Yeah. You can pull pieces out, or?
Okay.
The only thing you couldn't do is approve something that was not advertised. So.
Okay. Back to the mayor's question about those being fully loaded.
Right.
Are we, is this, do we not break this down into separate budget periods? In other words, if we were to hire those people immediately, the budget wouldn't be impacted by that much money for the fiscal year 2017 budget?
That is correct. Since it's a partial year, we'll say this is, end of June, our fiscal year ends in September, so it would only be a portion of this year if that position was what was funded for this year. Yes, that's correct.
So, question being, why, why are we considering $78,000 per position, or $70,000 per position, if that's not what's going to truly impact the budget?
That was, that was just the full, full cost for FTE that we had ran through. It was what the annual salary is on the low end of the salary scale. But you're right, we could, it's.
It's full disclosure for an entire year, so when you approve that, you know that next year you're approving $70,000, not a third.
A partial year, or a third year, $13,000, or whatever. You knew it would be the full year. That makes sense.
And also not assuring that you're going to spend the whole amount.
But we can budget for a quarter of that amount for fiscal year 17.
One of the justifications for, I guess my biggest concern is if we go back and look at the list. My biggest concern is on those positions, the building inspector, plans reviewer, the, those high-dollar positions. Okay? Building inspector, permit coordinator, and the engineering tech. Everything else, I'm up with. Those three positions, a couple of questions that come to mind. One, that one of the justifications was service levels.
Correct.
But I haven't heard anything, I haven't, we haven't gotten any impact that I know of, or in, in, in information from the developer community who would be impacted by that, that our service levels are substandard. And I'm not sure, by the information that you provided for us this meeting, that that's really going to have an impact. It's like, it is, because there's going to be more people there, but how much of a service level impact is it going to have? Are we going to go from waiting 60 days to get a permit done to six days? Are we going to go from 60 to 54? I mean, I guess that's, if that's one of the key drivers behind hiring these people, I need to know, well, how much of an impact is this going to make? If this is moving us from 60 days or 90 days down to a week, and allowing people to get on with their project so much faster, I'm like, yeah, let's do that. Because I'm all about, I'm all about the service impact, but if it's really not going to have that much of an impact, I'd have a hard time justifying that, that expense.
Okay. Well, it's my understanding with, from speaking with staff down in the community development, they're able to, to stay up on the current workload, but it's just the amount of workload that they currently have, that they're spending a lot of time. Maybe Russ can speak to the, the volume of inspections that they have, or what else they have behind the scenes, but that's my understanding is.
We'll have Russ stand up, because our weeks have slipped, so the number of weeks it takes to have permits issued, since we've, 2016 hit that higher level, it takes us longer periods. So Russ can speak to those number of days.
There was also some information, as I recall, in the, in the information we received that showed the number of inspections that an inspector could do.
Yes.
And basically, there's just no way they could keep up with it. I mean, if you look at the number, and that was actually.
Yeah, I got that part of it, but, anyway.
Russ, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, Russ Kinnon, Public Services Director. And I'll mention a couple of things, but please ask additional questions if I don't hit on the topics that you're, that you're most interested in. And I think Mayor Jacobson kind of hit it on the nose in regards to the building inspector. Our, currently, we have one residential building inspector. So that inspector can go out and do anywhere, reasonably about 25 inspections a day, and that gives him about roughly 12 to 15, 20 minutes per inspection. So that's doing the inspection, coordinating with the builder, going over the sheet, trying to do that. Oftentimes, he's out doing 30 to 40 inspections a day. So what happens is, is our level of service decreases because we don't have, they don't have time to communicate. They don't have time to stop and, and help somebody understand if there's corrections on that, on that building inspection form. Last year was our, our third busiest year in history in regards to residential units. And, and we're really, we're pushing people beyond where we can reasonably push them in regards to the work volume and workload. The building inspector position is very, very important. Otherwise, what's going to happen is, is currently now people will call for an inspection, and they'll get an inspection the next day. We, we work very hard to try to make that happen. So what, what's going to happen if we can't keep up with that workload, is that they're going to, they're going to be 48 hours out on an inspection rather than, we try to do everything within 24 hours. And that could even get pushed out even further. And so it's, it's, the building inspector is a very important position. We're also seeing a lot of subdivision activity and development. We're hearing now from the development community and from the builders that there just aren't, aren't enough lots available. They're running out of inventory. And so we're starting, we're seeing many more developments come forward now, which takes up a lot of our staff time, a lot of planning time, engineering staff time, coordinating all the water sewer infrastructure that goes along with that. And so the engineering tech in regards to inspections, helping to oversee some of the evaluation of the engineering construction plans when they come in, there's a lot of extra work there as well that's, that's happening with our, with our growing community.
If I can comment also on the coordinator, the, called concierge, whatever you want to call. I get lots of phone calls where people say, you know, "I'm calling, I'm not getting response back, I'm doing this, I don't know who I'm supposed to be talking to." And it's not that staff's not doing their job, they are. But our, our goal is to, you know, if this is approved, is to have someone that can watch the developer, the builder, the homeowner that wants to come in and get something done, watch them through the process. Because a lot of people, you know, the developers will understand the, the process, the engineers will understand the process, but a lot of the individuals will not. And how many times we have people come to council and say, you know, "I didn't get this." And that, I think that's just going to take the load, a load off current staff. It's also going to help facilitate that smoother process, where you do get people that are willing, not getting frustrated, and willing to come back and do business with the city.
Okay. Joe?
While you're up there, can, you spoke to the residential aspect of it. Can you speak to the commercial aspect? Are there demands there that aren't being met also?
There are demands there as well. So currently, we, we contract, Justin Miller, our building official, is licensed to do commercial inspections. We get, so commercial can include all commercial industrial facilities, which also includes multifamily facilities. So we're see, we're seeing a lot of that as well. So right now, we contract with City of Coeur d'Alene to help with overload situations in regards to commercial plans inspections. regards to commercial plans inspections. So this new position not only would help out with the residential inspection side, would also help with the commercial, we're also requesting part of that position be a commercial plans inspector as well, for backup. Okay. So, so we do have one residential inspector, so if he's gone, our building official is the only other one licensed to do the inspections, so he has to do those inspections. So if, if, we had a lot of commercial plans, the Coeur d'Alene inspector is busy, we either put in a lot of overtime, or the building department puts in a lot of overtime, which is currently the case now, in order to keep up with the workload, so.
Okay. I'm good. Do you want me to cut out off here?
No. I thought you had something to say.
I did. No, you thought I was going to sneeze?
No, I thought you had something to say, go ahead.
When you said a lot of overtime, that just stuck out there. What's a lot of overtime?
I would guess our, our building official in regards to plans inspections, he probably puts in anywhere from eight to ten hours extra per week.
Every week consistently?
Every week. And that's on top of contracting with the City of Coeur d'Alene to do commercial plan reviews for a portion of that workload.
Can that cost us, you know, the city time and a half when you look at those types of overtime? And then contracting out is much more expensive also than having somebody on staff.
I'd like to point out something that came up last time we talked. I think staff has shown that if things slow down, we don't have a need, they will reduce staff accordingly, and I think that's important to note.
Appreciate, I appreciate you taking the time to answer my questions.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Russ and Jason. Do we have anybody we should speak to? Mr. Rubin is in opposition with qualification. It's good to see you, Barry.
Good evening, Barry Rubin, good to see everybody. I was going to put in favor of with qualifications, but I didn't want EMS having to come and revive everybody, so. Actually, I'm in favor of most of this, however, Counselor Wolf brought something up, which I'm going to address now. I just saw no analytical analysis, or non-analytical analysis for that matter, of a couple of these positions. I would have expected for the money involved here, something to the effect of current time to do an inspection, estimated time to do an inspection with another hire, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Something of a substantive nature. What I got out of this was more of anecdotal testimony, if that's the right word, rather than a hard and fast analysis. And I think the taxpayers would be much better served if a little bit more time had been taken and done two or three lines where we are now, where we anticipate to be, savings minus overtime, or something of that nature, and some type of matrix. I, I didn't really understand how something of this magnitude could, could just go so easy. But, anyway, I'm in favor of the animal shelter. I think we have an obligation to take care of the animals in a, in a decent humane way. My question is, where did the money that water reclamation is going to give to this come from? Did that money come from fee increases in water rates, sewer rates? If that's the case, that money should not be going to an animal shelter. So I see the mayor shaking his head, so if I can be enlightened as to where that came from, I will retract what I did or didn't say.
Well, that would have been, come from the capital fund, correct?
Correct. So it's part of our master plan, water master plan, and it's a lab that was intended to be built as part of the master plan. In fact, it will save the, the reclaimed water money overall, as, as they would have had to build a new building, had they not been able to rehab this building.
So that two-hundred-some-odd-thousand dollars is no way related to any fee increases or things of that nature which we've been paying for?
Fee increases in relationship to the capitalization fees that are paid?
Not usage.
Yes, but not usage.
Not usage fees, okay. That was my main concern. The other thing, and I may be treading lightly here and stepping a little bit out of the parameters of a public hearing, and so if the attorney wants to gag me, I fully under, or, or the mayor hit me over the head with a gavel, which might serve everybody well. I had heard, and I don't know how true this is, of that seven-hundred-thousand dollars magically appeared, or popped up. I'm not quite sure where this came from. And there may have been some discussion of what to do with that money, and how come it, it wasn't figured correctly in the budget? So I'm a little bit puzzled, if I'm a hundred and eighty degrees off the track on that one. I think there needs some, to be some more discussion about that. I stopped getting the newspaper, Brian isn't here, so I'll say that, because I didn't agree with their editorial policy, so I canceled them. So I'm not in the loop as much as I used to be. But is there anything to this seven-hundred-thousand dollars? And if there was, why not give it back to the taxpayers? And the positive PR postfalls would get to that, would be a heck of a lot more than seven-hundred-thousand, so I'm all ears on, on that, if it is in fact true.
We've had discussion on the budget process. We did talk about, can we give it back? How do we do it? How do we use those funds to reduce taxes as we move forward? And no, money just doesn't magically appear. But you know, a budget is an estimate. It's based on information that you have. And I think staff does a very nice job of that. The challenge is, as we get through the budget process, we typically don't get property as, the taxes as values till very late in the, in the game, number one. Number two, we, really, we can project where permit fee will come from, I'm sorry, permit income, fee income will come from. But I think Council President Wilhelm said, you know, we anticipate that that's going to be less this year than it was last year, because last year developers were coming in and taking eight, ten permits at a time, and now they're not doing it because they don't have the time. So it, it is an estimate. And, and again, as we talked about previously, we make these budget adjustments, but that doesn't mean the money's being spent. You know, but you've got to be able to transfer the money. So things that were budgeted for last fiscal year that did not, were not purchased, that has to be moved forward into the current budget. So there's a whole lot more that goes into it than just money reaparing and saying, let's go spend it. And I think the staff has done a good job in analyzing.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't, I'm over my limits, so.
I understand, but it's.
I wasn't intimating any nefarious.
Understand.
Thing. I was just curious as to what happened from an accounting standpoint, if nothing else. And actually, at the end of the day, does that mean we didn't really need to do the six percent, the three-in-three tax? Because I've heard mumblings about that out and about. And I, I think it might be worthwhile perhaps if some type of blurb maybe was put on the city website, if nothing else, to, just to clear the air, for lack of a, a better term. I think it might do a lot of, a lot of good. So that's really all I have to say, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Where's Russ? There's Russ. Russ, I would assume you're not rebutting, I haven't got the information. I will close the public hearing. Counsel, how do you wish to?
We're going to have an ordinance later in the meeting.
So any, any comments at this point? Just wait till the ordinance?
I'll just say that I appreciate staff giving me more information here tonight, but in agreement with what Mr. Rubin was saying, I like to see a lot of justification for especially expensive positions, so in the future, you can either bring it to the meeting, or give it to me ahead of time, but I'm going to want to know. So I appreciate your comments.
Real quick, Barry, I was, I was thinking of you though when I read the letter from Cootney County Fire and Rescue. I mean, they had it down to the miles and the minutes, that it was, and it bears, it brought me back to when you were talking about the Greensbury overpass. And so when I was reading the letter from Cootney County Fire and Rescue, I said, Barry would have loved that, so.
I'm hoping that responds time to my house.
And Barry, if it doesn't make you feel better, the, the topic on the, on the tax increase and the surplus and stuff, we, we did beat that to death in workshops and council meetings and everything else, so it's, it didn't, it didn't get biased.
Next up is unfinished business. Tonight, we have none, followed by citizens issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Bob, come on up.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. I am here on behalf of my wife to remind you folks of the pedestrian problems we have on East Celtes. She's made a suggestion to me, and I even looked up the cost of the equipment it would take. But a better example is what they have going down Highway forty-one through Graftrum, what they have in Spirit Lake. They have those solar-powered signals that actually, where, that you could actually put on those crosswalks down there by Ace Hardware, and I forget where the other one is, but down there in that section, at a minimal cost and disruption to the traffic, you cannot see folks a lot of times in the evenings coming across that road. You, you just can't. And she is really concerned that some kids, especially kids, are going to get run over one of these days before we actually do something. I'd like to see this council actually look at the cost of those units, because they are used quite extensively in the other towns north of us, and their actual cost for installation as well as the unit is minimal compared to streetlights and that, other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
I know staff has looked at that, but could we just, at a future meeting, get an update on?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Next item, we're down to new business. First item up is fiscal year 2016 Comprehensive Annual CAFRA Report. Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFRA.
Yeah.
You've got two minutes.
Good. I'll keep it.
I'm going to call Jimmy Johns.
Yeah. I might have to stop subway.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. The fiscal year 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, it has been completed and audited, and the auditors gave an unqualified opinion, which means that everything was represented fairly and accurately. But instead of going through the entire one-hundred-and-forty pages of the CAFRA, I thought we'd go through the, there's a, there's a shortened and condensed version of the, the CAFRA that the PAF, it's called the PAF, or the Popular Annual Financial Report, which is more of a condensed version of the exhibits, financial statements, all the notes that accompany the financial statements, and all the tables and charts that go along with it. Let's get through the, the greetings section here. When you go through, first, there's a lot of narrative that goes along with this. One thing in the, in the, what they, they look for is the, the stats, and the, one thing that Kit has helped compile, compile this and does a great job with it, to make it help more look user-friendly. But our population is thirty-three thousand, seven oh nine. We also list on here the number of employees, the number of street miles, police, number of calls, how many utility customers we have, and also the, the school enrollment. That way, somebody could look at the annual financial report and see if, we have a lot of people that go and, and check this out to see if, if, if they want to relocate a business here, this kind of gives them a, a good idea of what Post Falls has to offer. This is last year, we receive the GFOA, when we complete the financial statements, we send them out for GFOA's approval. In the state of Idaho, there's probably maybe thirteen entities that, that receive the, the GFOA award, and on the PAF, there's only two that received the GFOA award in the state of Idaho. Let me see if I can enlarge this a little bit. Uh, yeah, I can right here. One thing that's interesting in, in these financial statements are, we, we had a question on what, what kind of expenses do the general government have, and what, versus the police department, the public works, and parks and recreation. And in our financial statements, we actually break those down by type of activities. At the top, we have, and it's broken down a little further in, in the actual CAFRA, we break it, the revenue stream down by whether it's general government, whether it's police, where you can actually see the, the net income between the two, or net loss between the two. But we break it up, general governments, basically, it falls in the category of, if it's not public safety, public works, parks, recreation, it's general government. And it gives a year-by-year comparison. We list the, the last prior, this year, the current year that we're in fiscal year sixteen, and compare that to the prior year, twenty, twenty fifteen, and note any change that goes along with it. There's a lot of entities that we'll look at, when we go out for bonds, they want to look at our, our, the, our net position. And that's basically a, you can see what the healthier organization is, is between your, is looking at net position, but is usually the difference between your liabilities and your assets. I wanted to point out in the prior year, what sticks out is the prior period adjustment of the four thousand dollars. GASB required that the Post Falls portion of Percy, the unfunded liability, is ran through the financial statements to give it a truer and accurate picture, so there was a prior period adjustment that doesn't occur this year, which.
That was, you said four thousand, four million?
Four, yeah, I'm sorry, four million. This is the four million adjustment to have the city's portion of the unfunded liability ran through our financial statements. And that was the first year that, that requirement. You can see a five-year trend on our total revenues for, for the general fund and our expenditures. There is a higher uptick in our revenues and expenditures, which is, that's a good And also looks at our net position from one year to the next. There's a large spike in between 2015 and 2016, and a lot of that is due to our increase of permits and fees revenues. Here's also our balance sheet for governmental activities, also gives the net position restricted assets, unrestricted, restricted assets and unrestricted assets from one year to the next comparison. And I really think this is an interesting, I really like, actually, all of this, I thought was kind of, kind of fascinating, where you can look to see, like, of the general fund, where is most of the money spent that comes in for tax dollars? Twenty-nine percent of it is general government, thirty percent's public safety, fourteen percent of it is highways and public works, ten percent is parks and recreation, thirteen percent is capital outlay, and four percent, and the one percent is debt. Principal and interest. Let's see if I can reduce this a little bit. And this chart also lists what we have for fixed assets, just breaks it down a little further, a lot of people like the, the visual aids. And also our enterprise, which is our water and wastewater operating revenues and operating expenses by, by, by graph charts. And if anybody's interested to go through the CAFRA, I'm more than happy to go through the, hit the high spots on that. Anybody had any questions? I know Councilmember Wolf had asked of the general fund, what is, what departments, like, what is parking recreation receiving revenues and expenses? And I had sent that out. And that is, that question does get answered in the financial statements.
I'll ask one question, because it may be on the minds of some people out there.
Okay.
But if we have eighty-five million dollars in the bank, why do we have debt?
Well, a lot of that is, we have reserve funds that we have to have, we have operating, some of that money is, like, say, for example, impact fees. The money comes in, but we The money comes in, but it would only be sent, spent on certain, certain things. When wastewater issues debt, they're issuing debt to get a large source of cash and pledging future revenues that they have to pay that debt. Same with the general fund. They're using inserted cash, which sometimes that inserts of cash came in, and they have the debt that they pay back, like the wastewater utility, they got $10 million, $10,800,000 in, in hand, and then to pay back, to pay that back over 20 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Next item up is the...
Do they need to make a motion to approve or accept the CAFRA?
Oh, do we need a motion on that one?
Yeah. Yeah, we need a motion to accept the CAFRA.
I would move to approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year 2016.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much, thanks, Shelley. Next item up is the Greens, Green, Greens Ferry Grove First Edition subdivision. Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, Council members. Tavis Schmidt, Associate Planner with City of Post Falls. I'm presenting the Greens Ferry Grove First Edition. It's case file S-17-05. The applicant's Lake City Engineering, and the owner's Big Creek Land Company. The requested action this evening is the city council is being asked to review the subdivision request and approve the proposed subdivision, along with appropriate conditions if necessary. The project is located at the southeast corner of 16th Avenue and Greens Ferry Road, as highlighted in red here. Parcel, there's an existing house on the site, and it's addressed at 2444 East 16th Avenue. The property is approximately 4.2 acres. Regarding the subdivision, on May 9th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. The proposed subdivision is for 18 single-family residential lots with an average lot size of a little over 7,600 square feet. Works out to be a density of approximately 4.3 units per acre. The surrounding zoning is primarily single-family residential R1, as shown in the yellow on the map here. The white areas are county pockets, and the red along the south is community commercial services as you're getting close to Mullen Avenue. This proposal shows the proposed layout, or the slide, excuse me, shows the proposed layout for the subdivision. To the south is a subdivision that had a Pumas Avenue just ended, and it will, so this will be continuation of Pumas Avenue to the north. 16th Avenue is here at the top of the screen. There'll be Fordham Street will come in off of 16th Avenue, and then they're proposing a knuckle and a cul-de-sac of Shepherd Court. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff did have a recommendation for an additional condition that did not make it into the staff report, and that was for, regarding these two lots here, the, to expand the minimum width to accommodate a 14-foot driveway and five-foot setbacks for the driveway on either side for a total of 24 feet. These properties are on the cul-de-sacs and knuckles, so it's really hard to get the appropriate width there. But in review of that, staff just recommends that, that gets, we make sure that that recommendation is being passed down. Within the Post Falls Municipal Code, there are six criteria regarding subdivisions in Title 17. The first one is regarding waters, water, is it available, and is it quality water? With this project, Ross Point Water District is the utility provider. The second criteria from the municipal code is regarding the public sewer system. Do we have adequate supply? Can it accommodate this proposed subdivision? The City of Post Falls does have adequate capacity. The proposed layout is adequate. The existing home will connect to the sewer at time of development. This aerial photo just shows the project site is highlighted in red, and the existing sewer infrastructure. We're seeing the, on the south here, we've got the existing subdivision, sewer ends there, and then 16th, we've got sewer at the northeast corner of the proposed project The third criteria from the municipal code is that the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. Staff reviewed that and found the roadway alignment and cross-sections to be appropriate. There will be no direct access from any of these subdivision lots to Greens Ferry Road or 16th Avenue. They will all have direct access to the new internal streets. And the proposed layout accommodates connectivity. The fourth criteria is regarding soil and/or topographical conditions, and any other natural hazards on site, and there's been, none of those have been identified presenting hazards to the proposed subdivision. The fifth criteria is regarding the zoning, and that the zoning is appropriate for the proposed use. The property is zoned R1, single-family residential. They're proposing all R1, single-family residential there. All the lots meet and exceed the minimum lot dimensional standards, and it meets the minimum density with the condition of the two lots on the knuckle and cul-de-sac there. The sixth and final criteria is just, is regarding fees and costs to a subdivision, making sure that the community as a whole doesn't bear an unfair share of costs. And so with that, any annexation and impact fees will be paid upon building permit issuance for each of the individual homes as they are permitted. We received comment from Kootenay Fire, and they approved as presented. And then this is just the six subdivision criteria from Title 17, just kind of all in one there, in case there's any questions regarding that. At this time, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions to Tavis? I always got a question. Tavis, my only concern was those flag lots. You kind of talked about those a little bit.
Yes.
And it was just a little bit unusual in this particular packet, that, you know, normally we get a letter from Kootenay Fire and Rescue, and then on this one, we got, like, an email. Do they know about that? Are they very, they perfectly okay with those flag lots like that?
The, the comment that I received was that they approve as presented here, and then just staff reviewing it just found that those, that the, the two flag lots just need to be a little, have a little bit more frontage to accommodate the driveway width. We didn't receive any comment from Kootenay Fire, other than that they approved as presented.
Okay. Would it be appropriate for me to ask Chief Merritt?
This isn't a public hearing, this is just a review of the planning commission's actions, so...
Okay.
It probably would be inappropriate. You're basing your decision on the record, in this case, created before the planning commission.
Okay.
As opposed to creating a new record.
Chief, let chief off the hook, didn't you? Any questions?
Sorry.
Any other questions to Tavis? Thank you. I would assume we need a motion on this? Yes.
I would move to approve Greens Ferry Grove First Edition subdivision, file S-17-05, with recommendations and conditions from staff, including the lot width on the corner of the cul-de-sac-knuckle lots.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf.
I'm gonna go with it, yes.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes with four ayes and a yes. Next up? It's getting late in the day. It is. But I have to give you grief. Dodson Acres Subdivision. Mr. Manley?
I'm gonna step out.
Thank you.
He's going to Jimmy Johns.
Yes, Dodson Acres Subdivision, case file S-17-04. The property owner is Joseph Dodson. The applicant's rep is Tri-State Consulting Engineering. And the requested action is for an approval of a subdivision that meets the merits for infill neighborhood plan per Post Falls Municipal Code Title 18A, and to create 18 lots for 35 units on 3.54 acres. So with this, it's not just a subdivision, as part of the original, when this area annexed in, any other subdivisions outside of that original infill neighborhood plan also had to more or less come up with an infill neighborhood plan. Difference between a subdivision and an infill neighborhood, there's a bedshed analysis, which I'll present this evening. So it's really the hybrid of those two being presented, so it would be the merits of both. Looking at the project location, it's at the northwest corner of Pole Line and Chase, as you see here in the red hatched area. It's also here, and you can look at the zoning, the, this is SC4, Smart Code 4 Zone, which is a mixed form-based zoning description that allows for a variety of type of uses in it at mixed densities. You can see the SC3 to the north, which is typical to a single-family subdivision designation. And then you can look to the surrounding area, it's predominantly R1, single-family zoning designated properties, with a little bit of R1S to the west, and other mixed higher densities a little further to the east. As stated, 3.5 acres is a property size, SC4 zone. On the comprehensive plan designation, this area is designated for residential. The proposed density is 9.9 dwellings per acre. The water provider for this area would be East Green Acres Irrigation District, with the City of Post Falls providing the sewer. The proposed layout here that you see, they're proposing a road that kind of just loops around back on the pole line. You can see their proposal for fringe improvements along Pole Line, as well as Chase. What you're looking at here is an alley-accessed lots to single-family homes, a fourplex and a duplex. And you have Lot 1 is for a fourplex, and Lot 9 is for a fourplex, with the other lots being designated for duplexes. At this location, what you're looking, right from kind of the first turn here on this proposed street layout, a passage going from the west to the east, or vice versa, depending how you're looking at it. But these alley-loaded products is designated to front this passage, and this would meet the, as prescribed within Smart Code, of 20% of the proposed units. Then they get those seven units, potentially for approval, meeting the Smart Code. Also, there's some additional parking located right here where you see the cursor. In review of the subdivision, no subdivision shall receive a recommendation or approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission, or be approved by city council unless the findings and conclusions, unless the following findings and conclusions are made. So for Post Falls Municipal Code Title 1712-060, subsection H, I'll go through the six criteria for approving a subdivision, the same ones as the previous public hearing. But definite provisions have been made for the water supply system that is adequate in terms of quantity, quality, and type of the subdivision proposed. East Green Acres would be providing the service for this. Adequate provisions have been made for a public sewage system, and that the existing municipal system can accommodate the proposed sewer flows, and this proposed, at 35 units, would be able to connect to our sanitary service. Looking at the plan, you see here you have the outlines of the proposed project location. Just to the north, that is the Northern Plains Second Edition. The reason why you don't see this is, this is the sewer terminus currently. There is easements in place, but with the development of this, they'll extend it to the bounds, so at such time this would develop, they would either connect to that pre-existing line. Now, in speaking with engineering, hypothetically, let's just say, this project, they don't proceed and it, and it dies. Well, because this easement's in place, when this develops, they would then be, at their cost, be required to utilize that provided easements for sewer, and they would connect at that location. So sewer is available and facilitated to this site.
At the developer's cost, correct?
Correct, that'd be a correct statement. Proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, and the proposed layout would not have any significant impact on a local transportation system. All areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil, topographical conditions presenting hazards, have been identified, and there are none for this proposed subdivision. The area of the proposed subdivision is zoned for the proposed use and conforms with the requirements found in the code. I'll go back to that layout over here. As part of the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing, Lots 1 and 9, there was comments regarding the possibilities of these lots not meeting the minimum lot size. In conversations with the applicant, the width here is 88 feet, so the concern was the limit of 96 feet. That calls out by Smart Code 4 is, or it's, sorry, it's 104 feet. I think it's greater than 96. There was concerns that it would be violating the minimum lot width, but there'll be fronting to the south. So, actually, I, it's 100, it's over 100 deep, and it's 88 wide, so that's what keeps it between the 24 and 96. So any permits that would be pulled for Lot 1 and Lot 9 would have to face Pole Line in order to meet the standards for the SC4. Otherwise, we couldn't process site plan permit. I don't know if that makes sense, I see you're looking inquisitively.
So they're gonna access Lot 1 and Lot 9 from Pole Line?
They, they're front, so...
Just, they just gotta turn the building.
Right, so the front doors would have to face Pole Line. They could come in off of their road access, off of, to a rear access parking area, but the fronts of the buildings would have to front Pole Line. So when it comes with addressing, and it had a technical gurney test front, it's where the front door faces, not where the garage door faces. The sixth criteria is more or less that there's no undue burden, or for the cost-sharing for development. This is typically done through impact fees, so with this proposal, impact fees will be paid just with any other development, which is public safety, streets, and parks, as it's proportioned to share. This is what I referenced in the intro, the bedshed analysis. So being that this area is in the same bounds of the annexation, as part of the bedshed analysis, at the time of the, what was called the Mikey Acres Annexation, there was two qualifying bedsheds, as described within Smart Code. You have what would qualify as an open green in bedshed 2. It also serves as a swell, as well, but because of its topography, it kind of would qualify for a green as well. All, in bedshed 1, you have the Montrose Park, and both of those, when you look at the quarter-mile bedshed, that they would lie within that. So the proposal meets what the requirement would be for open space. That's why there's none that you're seeing provided within the meets and bounds of this So in overview, the lots do meet and exceed the minimum lot dimensional standards. The proposed dwelling does meet what's prescribed within Title 18A, which is for an SC4, a minimum of eight dwellings per acre. It's intended that the development would be constructed in a, a single-phase infill. It would provide critical improvements at the northwest corner in Chase and Grange that would be attained at a time of development for pedestrian access and safety. Fire did, though, comment on, and particularly, the alley access, and they were concerned with the overall access and safety, is that there should be a no parking signage posted at the proposed alley to be viewed and reproved by the fire marshal prior to issuance of an alley-access CO for those residences. Also, alley-accessed housing units must provide points of entry from both the north and south passageway, and also be addressed on both sides as well. So they'd have, basically, two... So they'd have basically two fronts, more or less, a rear front and a front front, or a porch front, whoever you want.
Just 'cause it's getting late. Making it work.
Don't do this till it's nine o'clock.
I know. Half delirious at this point, but didn't receive any other agency comments. And then this is the overall criteria that we use for reviewing a subdivision. It's quasi-judicial, so more or less if it meets the criteria for review, in general, would be recommended for approval. So that would conclude staff's presentation. Any questions about it?
Can you define a passageway? Because I'm not liking what I'm seeing in that frontage.
So a passage is more or less a corridor, a pedestrian corridor, or a trail corridor that a residence would front other than a street or like a park or an open space. And so what this is, is a passage between two connecting points from the road, internal road, to the Chase road. So you're connecting from an internal street circulation to an external street circulation.
So it's basically a paved path?
More or less.
Wow. Well, then, P&amp;G also had concerns, I thought staff did too, with some of the roadways, and aren't some of those roads privately? Didn't be privately owned and maintained?
This loop is a public road. The alley would be private.
I don't like that. How do they access the alley?
Off of Chase. And then here's the turnaround.
Okay. So is that alley have to meet the same requirements as a road? Or is it different?
It's a, they have to meet a minimum of 20-foot clear path for fire. So they're meeting the minimum for a paved pathway.
Okay. And that's the area where Cooney, or the Cooney Fire and Rescue said they want no parking signs?
Correct.
I see only six parking spots for seven units.
Yes. So they would provide their garage, a parking pad, and then those are overflow parking. So in theory, and it would meet the minimum as prescribed for the SC4 zone, which is 1.5 parking stalls per dwelling unit.
Yeah. You know, I'm just gonna say it. I think this is a prime example of why we need to get rid of Smart Code. This is developed because of Smart Code. And I remember, and the gentleman that was here talking to us earlier quoted me stating that it's not incumbent on the city to make sure a real estate investor's investment is profitable. And I remember when this came forward, lots of construction was looking to annex property to the north. They asked to have, the staff asked to have the properties to the south brought in under the same annexation. And he stood there and he told us, I can't develop it profitably, a single family, so I need a higher density, and council approved it. And I think this is, I don't know, fourplexes, duplexes, and it meets the requirements. So I don't think there's a whole lot we can do about it. But there are no other fourplexes or no other duplexes in that area. And I know council, Wolf, you'd had questions on parks before, and to me, it's just a prime example of why we need to get rid of Smart Code.
Yeah. I just think this is an accident waiting to happen, because I don't think there's any way that, I appreciate the fire, Cooney County wanting to put up signs, but people are gonna park in that alley, and it's gonna block it, and there's gonna be a fire, and.
We had that in Montrose, on the streets of Montrose.
According to the chief of police, they're not enforceable.
Pardon me?
According to the chief of police, they're not enforceable either.
Yeah, because it's a private street.
It's a private road, yeah.
The fire marshal can enforce it. The city can't. It's a private road. If it's a fire lane, that enforcement isn't us. It's private property.
So we're gonna have 40 units on three and a half acres.
So is this something that we're gonna vote to approve?
Well, here's a question, and it meets the requirement.
In quasi-judicial matters, if the application meets the approval criteria, and there's no evidence to the contrary, then it, it needs to be approved.
It was approved as an SC, as a Smart Code, and that was brought forward.
Of course, didn't deny it. You have to find some basis where it doesn't comply with the standards. And here you have a relatively limited record because there wasn't a whole lot of testimony. So you're stuck with the record you've got, and my recollection of the record is that there wasn't a whole lot of evidence that none of the standards were not met, or maybe no evidence that none of the standards were not met.
I don't like it.
I don't like it at all. I would entertain a motion.
Move to go approve the Dobson Acres subdivision.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
I guess I have to, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm told.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is that an answer? I guess I have to.
That's the way the record's gonna reflect it.
Yep.
Because I didn't vote for the.
Mr. Wilson, this is not on the agenda, but can you come back to us at a future date and tell us how soon we can get rid of Smart Code?
We can do something about that.
Tonight. I have not seen, to my recollection, I can't remember a good thing that came, has come out of Smart Code, and I sincerely regret having voted for it.
It's, it's complicated. It's relatively quick to undo it, to repeal the whole title. That would take two months to do. The tricky bit is everybody who has that zoning in place, they have their entitlements in place, and so their right to develop under that code wouldn't be affected by that decision. Longer term, with the comprehensive plan and the zoning code amendments, we're hoping to transition and rezone some of those parcels so that we clean some of this up. And that's, I'm not sure exactly, within the next nine months, hopefully?
Not, not two weeks, huh?
No.
Thank you very much. Resolution. We have a resolution dealing with purchasing policy.
Move to approve the purchasing policy update resolution.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up's fiscal 17 budget amendment number two ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance fiscal 17 budget amendment number two on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, Idaho, amending the annual appropriation ordinance 1303 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2016, to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenues and to authorize expenditure of previously unbudgeted fund balance, increasing and establishing the appropriations for expenditures in various departments and funds, providing that the tax levy upon taxable property within the city is not affected hereby, providing that all ordinances in conflict herewith are superseded by this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, and providing that the ordinance shall be effective upon its publication date.
Move to approve the ordinance fiscal 17 budget amendment number two and to direct clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item up, administrative staff reports and the update on the Guy Road closure was flawless.
Good evening once again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. That looks like that would suffice. In regards to the Guy Road closure and the rail improvements in the area, going back a little bit in the history, back in 2008, Guy Estates was originally proposed and approved by the city. Guy Estates would have been in this area, kind of encumbered by these two red lines. That project never moved forward and never got to construction. Markets changed, and there were some unanticipated costs that the developer had on it, and he could not move forward. In 2015, a proposal was brought to the city, and it was heard before P&amp;Z and City Council in early part of 2016, and that was for Whiskey Flats subdivision. Whiskey Flats, you can see the initial Phase 1 constructed here, Tennessee Avenue and this cul-de-sac. That project was approved with the proposal of the rail crossing, or the road of Guy Road crossing, the railroad, would be removed with that project. Around that same time, city staff, during some safety inspections with the UP Railroad and the Idaho Transportation Department, was discussing rail safety in the area, in particular, what could be done at the intersection of Spokane Street with the rail crossing for improvements, also taking a look at that time at Prairie Avenue rail crossing. And it also came up with the close proximity of both the Guy Road crossing and the Grange Avenue crossing, that there's some safety concerns as that area develops, and you start to get more homes as you load them on, and having multiple rail crossings, that that presents a safety hazard. So in mid-year 2016, Idaho Transportation Department had some safety funds which came available, and they were proposing moving the Spokane Street rail crossing forward, the Prairie Avenue crossing forward, and the Grange Avenue crossing forward. Part of the railroad's discussion for Grange Avenue was that they could utilize some of the equipment that's in place on Guy Road, being the concrete planks, and putting that in at the crossing on Grange to help reduce some of the costs. Currently, we are waiting for ITD to give us a updated time schedule as to when the construction is going to occur. I talked with ITD last Wednesday. They said that they anticipate costs back from the Union Pacific Railroad within the next 30 days, and then once they have those costs, they will be issuing a notice to proceed and getting a firm date of construction, which is to be this year from UP Railroad. One of the items that would go along with closing that road crossing is, there are a few residents in the county out along the northern parts of Guy Road. Currently, Guy Road is barricaded across at Fisher Avenue. Those barricades are driven around on a regular basis, and I've talked with the Post Falls Highway District. They do not have an issue with the removal of those barricades. I've also talked with our street department today about being able to remove those barricades, do a little bit of grading, and putting a little bit of gravel down on about a 50-foot piece of Guy Road to make that connection. So that's a good gravel road connection at Fisher Avenue. Any questions of me?
Questions, Rob?
I guess the only question I had, Rob, was when Mr. Guy was here last, at our last meeting, it was like, he didn't real, he didn't know that that was gonna happen. Did we not notice him, or?
Mr. Guy, both Jim Guy and Bill Guy, as long with their other brother, were all on the role of properties that received public notice of the subdivision for Whiskey Flats.
Okay. Is this gonna make him happy?
I don't think this will make him happy, no.
Okay. Any questions? Please take the time, look at it, Rob, bringing it back to us.
What would you want to be brought back to you?
I'd say thank you for taking the time.
Oh, sorry. Misunderstood.
Bringing it back to us.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
You will see something come back to it. Once that, the crossing is closed, the vacation of that road section will occur at some point in the future.
True. Okay, but we don't have a time estimate on that yet.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor comments. I've said enough tonight. Council comments?
Me too.
See, then, we do, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I know. I've said way too much tonight.
Who are you? I haven't heard you in a while.
But I won't be able to go home if I don't remind everyone that Ironman 70.3 races this Sunday, and if you still want to volunteer, you can go on ironman.com, sign up, help them out. But it's this Sunday, 6:45 in the morning.
I'm body marking.
Good for you.
I've never done it before.
We do not need an executive session?
Do not.
Next motion is?
Adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.